You'll plan to leave that morning?
Unless somebody else wants to.
That's what I was asking you.
I will, but unless somebody else wants to have an honorary.
I think that's a matter of trade reasons.
What is it? But all staff, welcome.
Oh, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, light it up.
Nope, it is six o'clock.
That's six o'clock.
Alright, well call us when you know where. And I'll start the fuck with religions.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Marty, you want your local?
There.
Alex Woods.
Present.
Michaela Cravonview, present. Casey Wees.
Here.
Jeanette Simonson. Nick Hellsted.
Here.
If DeCarmenon.
Here.
And Caitlin Cunningham.
Here.
Okay, has the meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Okay, we have no public comment today, so I guess you can start rolling if you haven't. Alright, so 06 Community Engagement, 6.1 Gifts and Grants.
Yep, we are appreciative of a grant that Dan Anderson, high school science teacher, has received. He, it is a focus on energy and education around energy. So it's an $8,000 grant, and he's getting a lot of supplies for, I like that he's crossing buildings, so the High School Science Club will get some supplies that they can use when they work with the elementary kids on their science days. And last year, the solar panels were installed up at the high school. And we do have a TV screen downstairs around the main area of the high school that people can go by and see and read the re-notes and all that stuff. But he added a drone so that they can actually go up on top and monitor some of the things that are happening up at the solar panels. So it's a very generous grant, and we're appreciative of his efforts applying for.
Okay, I'm going to motion to approve that then.
Yes, please.
I'll motion to approve the gifts, the science part.
A second.
All papers, are I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody opposes.
Motion passes.
There you are.
Alright, moving on to 6.2, Board Policy Migration Discussion Discussion.
So I'm sorry for my email communications love, some people feeling you had a thousand policies to read before tonight. That was certainly not my intention. The transition from our WASB Policy Resource Guide into this Neola policy has literally meant every single one of our policies has been touched. And we started this process because we felt like it was a very responsible thing to just make sure everything was up to date. As laws change, we will adjust the obvious policies, but sometimes there's little sleeper ones out there that we, you know, don't necessarily see right away and don't update that language. For example, there were still some old personnel policies, as I was reading, that talked about a collective bargaining unit that goes back to Act 10 in 2011. So it's been a really long time since those policies have been looked at. So some of that language definitely needed to change. That being said, so many of the policies have not had any substantive changes, meaning we were doing this, and we now know that this is illegal, and we need to start doing this. Like, that didn't happen. There were certainly times when there were choices to be made, and I brought most of those to you in the 0000 policies and the 1,000 policies. A lot of those were decision-making as to what the board would like or not like. So our old WASB board policies are all housed on our website. You can just click when we approve new, when you approve new policies, we send it to Julie Tiedens, who is our webmaster, and she takes down the old one, she puts up the new one. Once our policies all transition to Neola, so you've already approved two of these series, Neola houses all of them on that Board Docs website that I created a password for each of you. Question?
Every time I've tried to go, I've just gotten a spinning wheel that won't let me log in.
Okay, let's play with that before you go to name. We'll see if we can figure it out. I apologize for that. But certainly reach out in the future if you're struggling, if the technology isn't working like it should. But all their policies are housed on Board Docs, and they won't always be password protected. They're password protected now because they're all in draft form. Once you've approved them, our website will have a link to board policies, and when somebody clicks on that, it will take them to the Board Docs, and everything will be visible because all of those things have been approved, okay? So it's not always going to be this clunky. This is just because they're in draft form. What I am trying to avoid is that this fall, you've already approved the 0000 and the 100000. And so those we have in Neola, and then all the other are still on our WASB Policy Resource Guide. I'm suggesting that since there is not any substantive changes to the other policies, it's the meshing of some of ours into one of, like, three of our little ones all went into one big one of theirs. And I've got a massive policy transition spreadsheet that accounts for every single one of our old policies and where that information is represented in the new policies. I'm suggesting that perhaps you want to lump approve the rest of the Neola policies initially, and then that policy committee continue to work, but we focus on the one series at a time so that at least we know all of our policies are housed in the same place, they're all in Neola, there's no question for admin which policy source they should go to if they have a question. And then the policy committee continues the work one series at a time. To be honest, that's kind of what the policy committee has been doing for years with the WASB. We started with the, they have different numbers, but we started on one end with the 100s, and we would work through that for a year. The next year would be the 200s, the 300s. So it was about a six-year cycle before we'd get back to reviewing those same policies again. So if that is not your preference, I am very okay with that. I just wanted to talk with you a little bit about timing and when we could start to plow through the rest of them. Because the, there's two of the series that are very, very, very similar. One is for professional staff, and one is support staff. So almost all the language is the same. It's just spelled out differently for professional and support staff. But then there's a couple of the series that are just really policy-heavy. And it's all the state statutes. It's about the part-time open enrollment. It's about college transfer academy. It's about all of those programs that are state mandated that we have to do. And the policy language is just tedious. But it's all there, and it's all updated, and... So your thoughts and discussions about how you would like to move forward with policy?
So the WASB stuff is still archived?
It's still on our website.
Is it easy for you to go back and look at?
It's all on our website, yes.
Yeah, so it's really just a matter of transformation of the data.
Yep.
So...
So...
I think, I don't know if there's a way to put a comprehensive list together of just like where changes happened? You know, like if it was in some sort of a format where you just, the whole, the whole thing, like here, this policy, this verbiage was changed from X to Y, you know, and you just kind of chomp through it that way rather than looking at all the black text that's not as... I think that would be a way for us to review all of it before we were to say, yeah, go ahead and flip to Neola. You know, so it doesn't just feel like...
So make all pretty copies of it so that you just see the black text that's...
Actually, I'm like...
It's almost like if it was, like, taken, like, maybe you do a docuSign document, you know, and it just kind of drops you down to the next section where there was a modification made.
Yep.
And I know that's not the way this is laid out, but if there was something on that, like, it would be very quick to get through to say that you've seen it, you know, and that you didn't just say, yeah, we're good, send it.
Yep.
So that's my only hesitation. But the fact that it's going to be there, and then you have the old WASB stuff still available to go back to and look to, it's not like that just goes in a recycle bin as peers, like... If there is something that creates extra discussion, we can go back to it, you know?
The devil is sometimes in the details of the definition of substantive. And the same problem we have in that there's so much of this is also how something weird can slip through the cracks somewhere in the zillion policies you have to go through. And so I would feel more comfortable if there was some way that we could... It could be like a two-hour process to, you know, to read through. Yeah, 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 yeah. But again, it's that, it's feasible.
So I'll show you what I've been working off of, and to your point, your ask. Okay, so here's what our WASB policy name was in this column, and this is the corresponding Neola policy. And they are not numbered the same, they are not named the same. So I literally had to dig in and read each policy to find out what it was talking about. And so an example would be, um... The 100s aren't easy. Some we do, so like some we didn't have policy on, and some, like, we have an organizational chart, which I think is helpful. Neola didn't have one, so I noted here that we added to Neola policy here. So there's a crosswalk for every one of them. When I get to the 600s, so ours was called Debt Management. Oh, those are the same, sorry, bad example.
Yeah, that Investment Income, Revenue and Investment.
Yeah. Yeah. And so when you go to the Neola website and see the huge list of them, you see all of these, and then you go back to your old spreadsheet of all the old policies that had already been approved. And so I guess I, so I absolutely understand that. And my thinking was, when people on the policy committee turn over, there's never been a time in my history that they go back to every single policy and start from scratch. They assume that boards before them have done their work, and so they accept those policies that had been previously approved. So, because I asked our Neola guy, I said, "How do most districts do this? Because this is really tedious." And he said, "First, most districts that transitioned to Neola didn't have as many policies as we had. We had a lot of policies already, and so that just makes it a little clunkier as you're trying to transition." And he said, "Most of the time, the boards make one lump here." They don't all have policy committees, but they choose to go from wherever they were to Neola, and then they educate themselves on a different section of policies for each monthly meeting."
Re-edit the policies as they go and need to.
Yeah. But again, I don't have a preference. I, where I'm caught in between is the zeros and the 1,000s. You've already approved, so technically, those are our active policies. And on our website, there's no way to note that because Neola's either on or it's off. It's not on for two series and then off for the rest of them, so...
Having participated in some of the first round of reviews, I feel like the content and the purpose behind what Neola was trying to do. First off, I think when you have two parties, yourself and Neola already, you know, Shelley and Neola already going through policies, I think there's, it's not like we're just, you know, blindly. We have, there's a lot of people that have seen them. But when we got into, like, looking at each section individually, I felt like there were content changes that, like, we felt kind of called to, like, look a little bit more deeply at. But for the most part, I thought that the overall changes just got us closer to where we should have been anyway. And so I guess, based on the experience I had of the first two sections, I would be tempted to say, yeah, I would go ahead and use the Neola ones because they're already going to be more up to date than what we had. And then, and then, yeah, go through that deep dive of like, okay, because you're going to catch that weird stuff. We, there was weird stuff. But like, we were able to catch it fairly, like, quickly. And none of it, I don't think, from my perspective, it just made it clear, not necessarily. The purpose would have probably been the same had we just kind of rolled with it, but we decided to make it clearer than what was already presented.
Now, the spreadsheet that you had, Shelley, does, is it, are you able to go through and really pick the ones where the biggest changes happened to? And maybe those are the ones we just focus on first?
I could. The challenge is going to be, they don't feel like changes to me because I've been using the policies. To people who've never read them, I'm unsure what feels like more dramatic change, if that makes any sense? But I certainly can highlight ones that I think are topics of interest, like, so...
Were there ones for you, though, that you were like, oh, that's way different?
The zeros, that's why I started there. The zeros were all about board behavior, and it was about board decision-making and whether you could vote electronically or all those things. So I gave them to that committee for them to do the bulk of that editing, to be honest.
So in your opinion, is there anything controversial? In any of these? Because what I don't want to do is find out some hot-button cultural topic gets changed, and then somebody from some organization comes up and says, "You approved these blanket, didn't you see this change?" And get caught saying, "Well, we said we'd approve them, and then a couple of months later, review them and fix them." Like, that's, that's not cool. And, I mean, it's convenient, and it will work as long as there's not some change to some, you know, athletic policy or something that gets people mad or something, you know, like...
The purpose of my spreadsheet is to look at the one we have and then the one that they have, and if there are differences, is it because of a legal reason or was it a local decision being made? Is where I decide. And so if it's legal, we would have to change it. And I can't think of an example other than in those bylaws and admin ones, those beginning ones. We've added some policies. So we've had our H11.1, our Native American and tribal parental involvement. We have to have that as part of our impact aid, whereas most districts don't have impact aid dollars, so it's a moot point. So Neola didn't have a sample. I took our old one and uploaded it to Neola and said, "Please number this and put it into our community relations." So this spreadsheet has tried to help me catch those that are very local to us. And Dave, our Neola guy, when he comes, he's just like, "You have edited these policies more than any of my other clients." And I said, "That's because we had so many policies before," so... But you're absolutely right. You don't want your name on something that you haven't had a chance to read. If you would rather commit to, in the next four months, read hundreds of policies and spend hours together as a committee so that we can give them all that approval, I'm great with that, too. I just am looking for some kind of a timeline because, to be honest, the Neola, the first year, you pay a greater price during the transition. And he's like, "When do you think we're going to finish transitioning?" And it was a little bit clunky because Brad was the board rep and then didn't run. And so as soon as he announced he wasn't running, then he kind of stopped, and so it kind of fell off mid-year, which doesn't usually happen either, so... I guess if not the full approval, I'm great with that. But what would you like to see for a timeline so that I can articulate to everyone when will be transitioned?
I guess a thought I have on this policy is like, it's like we bought a new bus, let's say, you know, and you have to do maintenance on it, and you have to review it. It's a constant, there's maintenance to policies. So I don't know if we just start using the bus and do maintenance to it as we go, you know, and make some dust for it or something, or...
I, it's my thing to be like, anything new that nobody, that has not been approved at all by a board, previous board, we should be looking that over. And it doesn't sound like there isn't either, am I correct, Shelley?
Yep, yep, and I just thought of this example. So there was school safety. We had emergency plans, emergency drills, threats. We had all of this, and they incorporated all into one policy. So I read through all of these and made sure it was all in this one.
So there's nothing where there'll be like a 30-day timeline gets turned down to a 15-day timeline or anything?
I didn't make any of those adjustments. I, as long as there were, I can't think of an example where there was a legal reason, and so I took it. The grievance policy has some very specific timing in it and a decision to be made by the board that we usually talk about during our August board meeting, whether the board wants to have an impartial hearing officer in the case of a grievance, or if the board wants that to be them. And that is a matter of policy. Right now, previous boards have said you want us to have to hire an impartial hearing officer. If there should be an employee grievance that isn't solved at the principal level or at my level, it then goes to an impartial hearing officer, and then that decision goes to the board for the final. But that's a decision. You can be right after me for, you could be after the teacher if that's how you want to spend all your time. But, so that grievance policy is one that we usually talk about just because you have to declare once a year whether you want an impartial hearing officer available for those things. So like, those are on my little list of August things to make sure I talk to the board about. So that grievance policy is something that would have to change if the board changed their vote on that. That make sense as an example? Of something that, there's a strict timeline, and if it changes, that would impact what the policy says.
I think I'm like, also, Alex, I like that you're thinking about the cultural substantive content because I think that's super important. I, I'm not sure, I feel, I feel like it's possible that it's in there just because of the, like, you know, the turnover in this board kind of just trusting the last board. So I feel like it could very well be whether, whether we, like, know it or not. And I actually really like the fact that we're in a place where somebody's looked at it recently, and we're going to look at it with them. But yeah, totally with you. Like, I don't want to be approving weird stuff. The hard part is, is there could have been weird stuff before us anywhere.
Well, but it's not quite that example because the example that Shelley gave was, previous boards, you come in, and all the policies have been previously approved by the board, and so you're just going with them. But in this case, these policies haven't been previously approved by any board. They're Neola's language that we're adapting, right? That we haven't touched, and no member of the Black River Falls School Board has ever approved. So it's not a situation where we come in and we're rolling with the previous board decision. This is where we come in, and we've hired an outside agency, and we say, "Good." But we don't necessarily know that we, if it's good or not, depending on how much we want to charge that side agency. Now, as you know, in general, I feel like if we're paying for the service, we should use the service. I assume it has cost us a fair amount of money to contract with Neola to do this, and so I'm tempted to take Shelley's recommendation and roll with it. I just want to make extra sure that I'm, you know, making sure that we're not going to change a policy from 90 days to 30 days without anybody knowing or something like that, and then finding out the hard way, that's all.
So what are you saying about cost-wise? If we wait longer to cut?
I just said that we paid a larger amount upfront for the transition, and our year is just about up. And so Dave is just asking me, "When do you think we're going to be done?" And I just said, "I don't know." But now he and I have gone over every single one of the series, so he is just waiting for me to say, "This series is approved, clean it up, and we're ready for it to go live." So he's just waiting on us, and I told him we were going to have this conversation. He'll do it whenever we send it to him.
It's not an issue.
We paid for the service that usually is a year. I think they would certainly extend it. The other thing that I was going to mention is that the board always has the right to suspend a current policy. So let's just say that somebody brings something to your attention, and it just feels off and feels like, "I can't believe our previous board approved this," or that Shelley thought this was a reasonable idea. The board always has the right to suspend one of your policies and take action outside of that, and then send that policy back for re-edit. So there is always that opportunity.
In your professional opinion, is this the best way to go about this?
I would like to get them all approved so that we have one hosing of policies. And I love the commitment from both of you to start picking through that list, so that is my...
Can we give ourselves until August and just leave, leave everything active? Let the people that are putting the time in to try to look stuff over? I think seeing your, to have just a visual of your spreadsheet to know, like, things where you were saying, "Yeah, I'd like that we're changing that," or ones where you just adopted something we already had before, but then a board did look at that piece, at least, Alex. So those we probably don't have to focus much time on.
Still unapproved before schools start.
Yeah, and just try to get through, like, give ourselves one more month to look through it all as far as we possibly can. And then if there is sections that seem like there was a lot of alteration made to them, then maybe that's what we focus Policy Committee on, so... That's what my thoughts are, but...
Thank you. The other policy that I did throw in as a suggestion is the policy committee exists when there are, when there's a need for input from community members and from staff members. Perhaps because we're at this point that so much of this is legalese, perhaps we don't need the full committee, and perhaps the three of us could start setting some dates, and we could start reading through them so that board members have read them, and then the whole policy committee that has broader representation from staff and community members, they could be part of that next review. from staff and community members, they could be part of that next review of them. That would be a third suggestion that might make you feel a little better.
I, I really liked the community members and the like, staff being present. I think there's a huge benefit to hearing their perspective and their take on what we're reviewing, just because it can be very different. So I don't know that I totally love the idea of just having the board do it. I do kind of like the idea of possibly like, dividing them up into like, you know, doing it in pairs, so some of us are working on these sections, and some of us are working on other sections. So at least somebody from this board has seen, you know, because that's a huge undertaking. I did the first two, and it was a lot. So just for manage, management's sake, if we, you know, two of us took these sections, two, you know, it would help just kind of make it probably much more thorough. Because they do kind of start feeling, when you start reading, it's like, you know, so you have to kind of break it up, and it does take time. And I think maybe coming up with a strategic like, plan for doing it might not fit, too.
So lots of suggestions on the table, right? Another month can't hurt. We could also go through some during that month if you wanted to, or let everyone peck through. We could be intentional and pair up, whatever the wishes of the group.
I don't know, any risk of walking quorum or anything like that?
Not if just two of you are talking about policy, because you're gonna make recommendations to the full board.
Yeah.
And you two likely wouldn't be meeting. You would both be reading them independently, then coming to share.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
I think, was it five? It was really big.
Five is very large. The 5,000 series is a whole different program. It's hefty. And then the financials are no, slim reading either. And Jill also helped with a lot of the financials before she left, and then Brandon has started reviewing them.
So you have seven sections left to go through, right?
I think it'd be good to have approved before school starts, in the case.
Yeah.
Or, I guess, if we made to be, and if we did, we could prove them tonight, and always modify the road as needed.
What if we kind of split the difference? And, because I think it's a really good, I agree that especially, sort of the idea, because we've always done it this way, you know, who knows what's in there from, you know, other boards or other times and eras? You know, I think it is a really good idea to go through them. But at the same time, I think that like, there's, it's unlikely, I think, for us to get through all of them by the time even maybe school starts, or at least by the next board meeting. It's not that far away, and we all do have lives. So I like Nick's idea, too, of like, approving them tonight, and then doing sort of a retrospective review of all of the ones. And if there are specific concerns brought up by community members for things that are in those policies, those are things that we could suspend at that time and revisit immediately.
What does suspend on that would be like, like term, like immediately, if we voted?
So what it means to you?
Now, we have like, we'd have to rewrite the policy, and then have two meetings to approve it.
So it can go a couple of different ways. I'm gonna give you one example. When COVID first happened, in board policy, it said you must be physically present at the meeting in order to vote. And we had our first Zoom board meeting, and one of the board members said, I move to suspend policy, blah, 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 whatever that number was, and I, for tonight, and I want all board members engaged and able to vote tonight. And that needed a second, that was a motion, it needed a second, it received a quorum of agreement, and for the rest of that night, because that's what she said, that policy was not in place. And so that's what we did that evening. And then I said, would you like me to change this policy permanently? Would you like me to bring this back to Policy Committee? And they said, no, we want to get through COVID and see where we land. So you suspend it, it's a defined period of time that you're defending, you are. Another example, when somebody is speaking at public comment, somebody could say, I move to suspend the four-minute time limit and allow this person to speak to us for, what, 15 minutes? And if that receives a second and a vote of the majority, that time limit is suspended for that night.
So if we did something blows up or whatever, we could suspend it for 90 days, and then in that time, like, rewrite it and approve something else.
And you also, at any time, can suspend the double reading. At the next meeting, you could say, I don't need a first reading and a second reading, I move to approve tonight. That is also, that was your choice, so.
So, you know, we're not like, totally married to it, I guess.
Correct.
So we got, we have seven sections left to review. There's seven of us. But each one of us take a section in the next month, get eyes on it, come to the August meeting, and be able to say that numbers of the board have looked at each, everything. And then we can have a discussion about, are we okay to transition to it, and then still go through it the same way? The 5,000 is the thickest I'll take. So.
I'll take six.
I don't know if we need to vote or something on it. I'm just speaking to you guys. I'm not saying that's what we gotta do.
We can discuss, if everybody agrees and divvies it up, then we can vote on it.
Yeah.
But this is something that has to be unanimous. We can't divide it seven ways, and then say, you're getting section something to somebody who's like, oh, not doing it.
Janette's not here, so.
Yeah.
Kind of stuck with what's left. So we can be nice, try to figure something out. But, I don't know, you know?
We can move the table, approval of the.
I don't think anybody's stopping anyone from going through the whole thing. Like, if, you know, you are opposed to reading just one section, by all means. Like, I just want to make sure at least one of us has looked at the sections at some level, with a little, a little more intentionality, a little bit more detail beforehand. I don't know. It's up to you, yeah.
Is everybody okay looking through a section?
No.
A light reading?
No, not everybody's okay. And Janette's not here either.
Yeah. I've been reading these policies over the years. I don't see any problem with those. And once you're done reading, there is a law attached to it. You click on that, it will lead you to Wisconsin state laws, that how this policy came into existence. No one has ever called me, I'm always among the people, have a problem with any policy or something. Shealise Iverson just said, if we come across with some kind of contradiction, we can have a vote. And then that specific policy will go to Neola, and they will correct it, or something will happen. So we had that incentive. So this is my understanding. Have people called you regarding policy?
So I think, I think where the challenge comes in, if to card, is that what people would call you about is an administrator's actions, and those actions are grounded in policy. So they might not call and say, policy 4,221 is making me mad. They'd say, Nicole Sullivan is making me mad. Then we'd have to work through that process, and then we would say, Nicole Sullivan was enacting policy number, blah, 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 right? So I'm not sure that complaints about policy look like complaints about policy. They more look like complaints about actions administrators are taking. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do you see any problem with any policy?
I'm comfortable, but I have read every one of them multiple times, so you're asking the wrong person.
Yeah, I read it over the years. Everything is fine. Nicely written. I also like to click, lead me to the law. Very clear.
But it is all changing, is that's like the.
Everything.
Everything's changing. Everything you've read from before is now gonna be different. And so we gotta figure out, you know, how to make that transition smoothly, so we still feel comfortable. You know, that's what we're, we're supporting.
Well, I say if Shelley has reviewed them, and we have opted to put our trust in Shelley, I'm okay voting to move through this, and then continuing our moving, painting the Golden Gate Bridge, as if we're, you know, or we'll do the 300s next, I believe, or are we up to 200? We're up to 200. And then keep going, I'm okay with that. And in, in, in interest of moving things along, I will make a motion to that effect. And if people want to vote it down and give it another month, I, I don't hold that against you. I'm fine with it.
So Alex, what is your motion?
My motion is to accept the transition to the Neola policies as recommended by Shelley Severson in one bulk vote.
I second you.
And then continue reviewing them.
What would be the disadvantage to giving us till the August meeting?
Nothing inherently, except adding more to the August meeting.
Probably nothing really, but I feel that even if we do want to change the policy, we could do that at the August meeting. Or if we wanted to change some policy in any month on the road, we could.
So we all have access to drafts at this point.
And we could continue to review them. Well, I don't, I don't, I've gotten a spinning wheel. The first time, I thought maybe it was an internet issue, and so I tried again two weeks later, and it's still spinning wheels.
Sometimes I feel like it's just like a big undertaking, and you just gotta jump in, get what, and then.
Yeah, you gotta start eating the elephant, and then.
That's where my spreadsheet came from, because I was trying, going through all of them.
I don't know. It's, okay, well, we have a motion.
We have a second.
In a second, to approve the board policy integration to Neola. All in favor, signify.
Aye.
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 All in favor, signify this thing now. All right, motion passes. Like, I want to leave or something.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for that discussion. I appreciate your input.
Yes.
And there was nothing that wasn't valid raised in that, all those issues, all those options were valid as well.
Exactly what, so if you believe that the board exists to develop policy, this is one of your largest undertakings, right? So it should be your process that works and feels okay for all of you, so I agree.
Can I, can I, I feel like we should, I would like to clarify, since we've kind of decided to move forward. I do want to understand more so what the review process is gonna look like. So I'm gonna keep reading them, just because I want to understand them, and if I have questions, I'm gonna still bring them up. But, but I would like to kind of understand how we're gonna attack that little elephant.
Sure. So Alex and Caitlin have both agreed to be on the Policy Committee. I shared that typically, they don't meet during the summer, because we appreciate staff and families on it. So we were kind of waiting until September. We had a 6:00 PM start time so that they were available. And we will take the 2,000 series first, and similar to the way we did it before, except they will all be clean copy, because they have been approved, and they will read through them. We will come together, and then that whole, if at that point, only the policies that you recommend any changes would come to the full board for a first reading. So if they read through that whole 2,000 series, and all of it seems appropriate, then they wouldn't be bringing them to the full board. And if they have any changes other than grammatical things, that was something else that Dave said. He's like, I can't believe that your board used to bring a typo back for a second reading. He's like, there's a policy in there that says grammatical errors can be corrected without two readings of the board, and so. But, so that's the process review.
And yours are gonna be monthly, then?
That's the plan.
Okay.
So one section a month.
I, that was how we will start, and we'll see what they can tackle. There's two very, very, very dense sections.
And the ultimate policy. All right, moving on to 6.3, home transformation, collaboration, M O U.
Wanted to share with you the feedback that Chad had shared with Nicole. We do a lot of student surveys, and we ask people if they feel valued as a member of this learning community. We ask things like, do you feel respected in your school? And just a lot of ways of getting at their feeling of connectedness to the building. You've heard little bits over the years about how the Wong Shiwa Chek Club is one of our fastest-growing clubs, with more members that are non-native as well as native. This was just a really nice piece of feedback, not from one of our mouths, but from somebody else who is engaged in the work, that we thought that you would appreciate seeing. The group that has been doing the evening crafts for the girls, the sewing and the beading and stuff, they all have so many fantastic stories that they tell us about how they see some kids who are not being raised through traditional culture, that are now finding those opportunities to learn these skills that their great-grandparents utilized years ago, and how much they really have just blossomed doing that. And so we thought that this was just an interesting piece to bring along, to share with you, as somebody who we've leaned on heavily. Honestly, the whole high school drum group and singing group, that is a rarity almost. When you see it at other schools, which again, is not very often, there's almost always a male faculty member or staff member or community member leading it. These boys do it on their own, and they do it at several different school celebrations. When we used to do our flag raisings in the fall, it meant we had to coordinate all these different agencies. And now this group of boys comes out, and they do the flag song at each of the schools. It's really a fantastic leadership opportunity, and this was an example of how people from the community are helping to foster that and to grow that. So I wanted to share that feedback with you. Also, wanted to share that the release of information conversation that we've been having, the tutoring division is having some uncertainty in funding. And so they have asked us to, they have not committed to what adults are gonna be in which schools this fall yet. And so we don't want to jump too far into promoting tutoring services if they are not going to exist. And so we're waiting for some more confirmation from them. However, this authorization for release of student records, this has been a piece that when the Education Department asks me for student data, I can give them the aggregate, so I can say like, fourth grade Native American students, this was their score. And they sometimes want to know the individual name of the student, and we can't share that without the parent giving us this release. So this release of information, we are going to use our Skyward, our Thrill Share messaging system, that a parent will be able to go right into Skyward and check a box. And then each school will simply be able to run a report of all of the students that families have given us, that release of information. It's gonna streamline that process a great deal, from the teachers sending home the form in the folder a couple 20 times, and the kid waiting to get that back. So they were very excited that we were able to add this to our enrollment processes. So it, it looks like a simple thing, but to get all of the right verbiage and allowances and permissions, this would be a huge step in the direction that they have been seeking, that individual drill-down data information. So part of our data sharing calendar with them is that by the end of the second trimester, they get a list of all the kids who are credit deficient at each grade level at the high school. And right now, we can tell them numbers, but we can't tell them who unless we have this information. So our hope is that this helps them be able to target their resources around the kids' greatest risk. Any questions about that? All right, that was just an FYI for you.
All right, moving on to the little fires.
You had asked for an update, so I shared the numbers with you. Currently serving 47 kids. She was fully staffed for a while, but now there are several of our workers that are gonna go back to college. They've had some great, great, great experiences over there. You can see the waitlist as of July 18th, when she filled this out for me. So the school age waitlist is simply because there's not school right now for them to provide services. It's not that we have said we're full at the school age, but, so the inmates is still a pretty heavy need. But she feels that they have worked out a lot of kinks. She's got a lot of positive feedback from parents, and word of mouth is spreading that she gets calls pretty regularly about more people wanting here. There's been some requests about the price, asking if they feel like we're competitive, and we really did our research beforehand. We talked to Blair Taylor School District, to BRAC, to quite a few different centers, and we are certainly in the range of all the rest of those places. It is just insanely expensive when you have. It is just insanely expensive when you have infants, so, yeah.
Forty-seven kids, twenty-three in waiting list. Both together, they will be seventy. I like it. So it's growing rapidly.
Yes, it is.
Is, is there a top end for what if we were fully staffed, the building could handle?
So our, we were hoping to say under a hundred is what our hope was during the day, just because of the classroom spaces and how they're spread out. So right now, we have more square footage than we would need for each one of those rooms, just because the classrooms are pretty generous size, as opposed to if you build a building for daycare, you probably make a little bit smaller rooms, where some of our rooms are larger. We definitely have a room that's still storage, that has lots of room there. So we have some room to grow, but without overcrowding, we feel like that would be a good number. Something that is unique to the Gephardt Building, Caitlin was talking about that week, that it was either so hot, or when it rained a ton, they loved having the gymnasium there, because so many other centers don't have that kind of a large space for kids to get their wiggles out, so she was very, very excited that they had that opportunity.
It, it could eat, go ahead.
The size of the classrooms actually being as large as they are, recently in the last thirty days, the state passed quite a bit of policies regarding childcare issue, and our spaces will be able to do some things that other spaces won't, because we do have that, like, just a little bit of flexibility inside, in terms of just room availability. So that, that'll kind of impact to what we're able to do over there.
Yeah.
Was our license good for it?
So actually, school, board-operated childcare centers do not get licensed like regular centers where there's a set number. So it's about maintaining all the rest of those ratios, the staffing and the square footage and all of that.
It is pretty big school, I visited, I used to teach there time to time. They used to invite me to deliver a presentation on geometry or something. Huge classrooms. And now they have a gym, they can easily accommodate hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty kids for daycare in my little community.
Okay, just moving on to 6.5, community education update.
So at the end of the meeting, someone else had asked for a community education update, and so this is the work of Sarah Brown this spring, remembering that she started, what, probably April, starting, maybe? March, April, probably. This is the fall catalog. I really appreciate she's working closely with our marketing interns on the branding of them. I think it looks really great, that curious. So she had a whole bunch of taglines that she had shared, and I really wanted us to put an emphasis on some of our generations that maybe aren't as connected to school right now, and they're learning. And so I love they came up with curiosity has no age limit, I thought that was a clever name for it. So she has this catalog being printed, so there is the pamphlet, and there is the calendar. She is ready with a whole series of events for fall, and she's always open for more things. So she had talked about, while these are the ones that are in the booklet, if someone comes up with a great and clever idea, they could be added, so when somebody scans the link, they could also be there and be available. She's had a couple different organizations that have jumped onto the community calendar, which is a Google Calendar that other organizations, Parks and Rec has really started using it a great deal. I just want to make one other mention of a partnership with Parks and Rec Department. They are also trying to really expand programming opportunities for younger students. This summer, Jared Meyer has offered, for example, our high school PE teacher has been doing group kickball during the day. It's, it's kind of like a sandlot game, anybody who comes, which I, back in the day, we probably would've scrapped the ball, and some neighbors would've gone and done it, now your parents have to sign you up, and there's an adult there to facilitate it, but that's still a step in the right direction, that kids are out doing things. But he's really trying to get people more involved. So there's a signup system that if you've registered for anything at the London Community Center, that rec desk, the registration that comes back to you, so you sign up for a class, you get an email from rec desk. The city had a, an annual subscription to rec desk that Parks and Rec uses if you're signing up for softball, or T-ball, or whatever, but they use like this much of its capacity, because they don't have that much signup. We are paying them like a hundred dollars a year, and they're letting Sarah use their rec desk account for the signup for all of these different classes. So it deflates some of their costs and creates a stronger partnership between us and other community programming. So I thought that was a nice collaboration there, so.
And Nick Hellstake will be teaching basic welding.
I know.
That's right.
It says here, your name is here. This is you, right, or somebody else?
That's my clone.
Must struggle for good help.
I want to know what we're building, because I want to take it if we're building something fun. Can I make a Christmas tree or a sign?
Clone, I gotta think, I gotta...
Feel that.
Some of the other connections that we are putting Sarah in touch with. Right now, Dr. Sullivan serves on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and we feel like community education and Chamber of Commerce are all of our business partners, that's a pretty logical connection. And so Sarah will start serving on that chamber board, not on the board, yeah, the board, yeah, it is a board. She will start serving on that when she comes back, she does not work July, so she will be back in August. I also believe that Sarah is going to represent the district at Rotary most of the time, her and I will kind of swap off together, who will be there, because again, that's a great business connection for the work in the community. The other piece of her role that there wasn't a lot of launch time for, with her starting so late in spring, is a coordination of volunteers. We are really hoping that with a nice, easy signup system, that we can dramatically increase the amount of opportunities for families to meaningfully volunteer in their child's school. We get a small number of people who are persistent with their child's teacher, and then they find opportunities to volunteer. I just think that that can get a lot, lot, lot easier, right? There should be a way for all teachers to identify some times of the day that they'd love to have volunteers, and then if we take the burden of them reaching out and doing all the scheduling and rescheduling when it doesn't work away, and Sarah can manage that, I'm really hopeful that we can get a lot more parents engaging throughout the school day. So that will also launch this fall. Any other questions about the community education?
So, does she? Nevermind.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna just start with one line.
And there are some hot off-the-presses that are not in your booklet. If you look in your book, it stops at, or your, what you received stopped at Jody Meyer. We've added three more teachers since you got your packet, which is fantastic. Yeah, so I just have to highlight, there are some positions that are just very challenging to hire, because they're extreme specialty, right? So tech ed, ag are definitely those. We hired a ag teacher with some experience from a neighboring district, so they certainly are not going to be very impressed with us, however, all is fair in employment these days. So she's got some strong experience, just bought a house in Hickson, they have a small hobby farm, and now her husband just came as the science teacher. So in my opinion, if you're looking to retain people, bring the whole family, and they're much more likely to stay, so that's exciting. High school science teachers are also a tough-to-fill position. Our middle school tech ed position, nope, high school tech ed position, is also somebody who has lots of years of teaching experience, but she is taught in the ag field, which is also one of our career and technical education fields. And she is really interested in doing something different, so she's transitioning from ag ed to tech ed, and will have to work through some licensing, but she wanted something a little bit different, so. We're excited to fill those, we still have one high school special ed and a speech and language pathologist. The speech and language pathologist has been open for quite a while, we have no applicants, and so we feel we are at the point that we are gonna have to start looking at some of the companies who will do virtual services for us, just simply because that is a service that is guaranteed to the student through that individualized education plan, and we just can't find a body willing to be here for it, so. Any other questions about hiring?
No question.
Great. I guess I'll move to approve.
You need a, a vote, right? Go ahead.
He made the motion.
He won, I second it.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Nobody opposed.
Motion pass.
Is that a question or an order?
Moving on to 2.1, 206's report, Act 20 policy. Recording.
This is it.
Okay, so I'm gonna be talking a little bit about Act 20 and the policy. And so what's really nice, the DPI has done with Act 20 policy is they've asked us to have a policy, right?
Could you back up and explain what Act 20 all entails?
Okay, so Act 20 is an early literacy remediation law that was put in place last year, and really started mid-year last year, but we started the work in the fall. And so what it does is it mandates certain things, such as a lot more parent communication, the way and how we assess a literacy, and then that we have a plan in place, a personal reading plan for students who are below the 25th percentile in grades K1 and 2. And with that, we are also assessing in 4K. So with that parent communication, last year, so you have like a historical perspective, we were really partnering with EduClimber, which was our system that houses like our ability to sort student data, and kind of segregate, and do all sorts of different things. And there are some bumps in the road with implementation of EduClimber and that parent communication. We found out right in the middle of the process that the parent reports through EduClimber don't, aren't downloadable on cellphones. And so that wasn't something we knew until we were right in the process, and they fixed it right at the very end of this last year. So with some of those reasons and others, we have transitioned, we've talked about the new system that we're going to be replacing EduClimber with, which is NextP. And that system is going to create a different communication look, and allow us more ease of communication, as well as a system that's going to be more user-accessible to all of our teachers. So it has a, it has a cleaner interface. So what you're seeing here, I'm gonna, do you mind going to the next one? So what you're seeing here is every student in 4K through 3 will get a screening results letter after the students take an early literacy assessment, which is called EAMS Web. And so what it does is it goes through and explains what the components of reading are. And then this letter aligns with the policy that Brandon had on the screen earlier. And so we are sharing both the score for each assessment and the percentile rank. I have emailed NextP because they're kind of in the beginning, and they're still like doing things like, it'd be really nice if this graph looked a little differently. So for example, the, it says oral reading fluency, it repeats. It'd be nice if there wasn't a line in there, it just had the score and then the percentile. So this way, the parents will know what the child's score was, and then the percentile rank. So what we really want to communicate is this next sentence underneath the graph, which like scores are defined as, we want to be sharing what high risk looks like, some risk, and then odd watch versus low risk. So this is an assessment that's really about identifying students who are at risk of not reading at grade level. It's defined by lots and lots of research in the literacy world, so that's what, so that language of risk is hopefully going to help us explain to families exactly where their child is. So then parents who have their child is below the 25th percentile in that score, they'll get the second letter, and it looks a little bit different, yep, right there. And so it's going through the, oh.
Sorry.
You're good, yep, no, yeah, that one. And so this one then is, you know, again, explaining the components of reading. Side note, one of the things that we're working on for our website is that for each one of these components, if a student is low, there's gonna be a place where parents are able to go in and say, "I have a first grader whose decoding skills are below that 25th percentile, these are things I can do at home." So we're just, we're working on some of that process now, and hopefully we'll have them done this fall. So if we continue scrolling down, we're again, it's talking about what the risk looks like, that first to fifteenth percentile, below the 24th is some risk. And now there's some color coding, and right in the boxes, we see where the student was either has some risk or low risk in different areas. And as we continue to scroll down, where they had some risk. So like, we'll see this chart, which Brandon was scrolling through. They didn't take the, some of, they didn't take some of the assessments all the year through, and there's a variety of reasons why that might happen. So depending on your grade level, there are some assessments that are only done in the fall, there are some that are done fall, winter, spring. And then another area where this could happen is if a student is high risk in one area, will go, there'll be a second assessment that's given, more diagnostic-based.
And so it is fair that since they were the 96th percentile, they wouldn't take that assessment again, right? I just want to be really clear about it, that's why some of them drop off, they scored so high that they are low risk, there's no sense putting that child through that same assessment or anything.
I have a quick question about that. The low-risk category going all the way from 48th percentile all the way up to 96th percentile, A, it, that's a long range of information that's not being conveyed very clearly. Like, if I see a green line and my kid's in the 48th percentile, I don't think of that as low risk. I think of that as pretty rough.
Right, but...
And then if you have a kid who's doing great, there's no reward here, there's no cookie, there's nothing to even make the parent feel like, A, to me, it screams, "We're just trying to get everybody above the 50% line." We don't even code anything differently above 50%, and it makes it look like we don't care about success.
Because I would love to like talk about that, and like, because that's kind of the, the question. So there's different types of assessments, right? So this is an assessment on, like, for example, the first one, like letter naming. There is a cap, like, there are 26 letters to know and name in a fluent way. And whether I can say those in 30 seconds or 40 seconds, there's no correlation in any research where doing that, there's a shift there. So like, when it comes to reading fluency, it isn't about like, "I don't need to be the fastest kid." Like, there isn't any, there isn't any payout to reading at the 99th percentile. In fact, sometimes comprehension decreases as you read faster and faster and faster. This is, this part of reading is about identifying students who really are at risk versus identifying that next step. So like, because then what you're really talking about is comprehension, and some of those comprehension pieces would be part of my answer to that question, but I really appreciate your question, because that's something that we're having a hard time communicating out to families. So there really isn't a risk about the, because the 48th percentile, that child's okay, like, their decoding, their reading fluency, all of that is where it needs to be for this assessment. It's about, and this assessment is about those students who aren't doing that yet.
If I could just add to that, not just this assessment, but this communication only goes to the families who have a student who's below the 25th percentile on one of these skills. And so the function of this communication is not to say, "Here's the array of your child's skills," but to look at this and quickly identify which of these sub-skills. So instead of a parent hearing, "My child is doing poorly in reading," they can then quickly look at this and say, "Oh, not their phonemic awareness, but their letter-word sound fluency," right? So in, with a quick glance, they can break down the sub-skills, as opposed to hearing, "My child is struggling in reading." So this piece only goes to the kids who have scored below the 25th percentile in any one of those areas. What I hope is happening is a student who has a lot of scores that would be green on here, when they go to their parent-teacher conference, or they reach out to the teacher, the teacher says, "These are some of these extension activities, because we want your child to keep growing. Every child is expected to keep moving forward." So the function of this is below the 25th percentile, and to be able to hone in on actionable pieces, as opposed to the celebration of, "This is all that my child is as a reader." So just a little difference on the function.
I, I guess where I'm struggling is, what is the reading level for form? This form that you're sending out to families? If you're sending it out to families whose kids are struggling with...
Phonemic awareness?
Yes, and you're sending, I know that from some of the work I've done, like, keeping it at this, like, the simplicity of the reading level for a parent is important, too, because this is a lot of content. And so this, if there's also...
Just so you know, too, like, there's some of this language is on here, because it's required by law. This entire communication is required for every student, kindergarten, first, second, and next year, third grade, that scores below the 25th percentile. So I'm gonna take this a step further, how do you think this parent of a special education student who is the fifth, do you know what I mean, like, this is not designed to be our most communicative... Like this is not designed to be our most communicative.
Right, I just wanna make sure there's some sort of like supplementary communication taken because, you know, the parent's capacity may be influencing the child's and that obviously would be a problem if you sent this out.
The hope is that the color coding helps, right? I mean, I think green is a universal forward.
I actually found this much harder to read than the previous version that didn't have the color coding.
Really?
Much harder.
Wow.
This looked like a big pile of garbage and gobbledygook to me. And the last one just said percentile, number, score, number. And I could read right down the graph and see it. This really overwhelmed me when I first saw it.
And I think even the definitions are, I mean, not that you shouldn't send this out, it was legally like required by all means, but if you could send something out that's just sort of a, you know, fourth grade reading level, like, hey folks, let's work together, you know? Because, you know, according to Wisconsin Act 20, like if you didn't know what a Wisconsin Act 20 was and wasn't familiar or felt comfortable enough to go figure that out, you'd lose them right there, you know? And you're, now you've kind of lost them for the rest of the paragraphs. I just, I would.
And so we had a lot of conversation about this and to be honest, part of what I appreciate about this communication is that when our classroom teachers are sitting across the desk from a parent, they always default to positive and uplifting and kids trying really hard and yep, they're not quite there yet, but they're trying really hard. And we asked the question in our survey, do you believe your child is at or above grade level? And the number of parents who think their child is at or above grade level versus our reality is very different. And so this is harsh language, but part of it, we were hoping that some parents would be like, oh, 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 I better start engaging. And so what I said to Nicole after we did this was, and when I see that my child is in the red, or color, not color, when I see my child is below the 10th percentile, I want to be able to immediately say, and now what do I do about it? How can I help as a parent? So at some point, a call to action a little bit as well?
Yeah, I just would be concerned that that might not be what they glean from it.
Yeah.
Is that they get lost in the language.
And this comes out at about the time. Maybe I could finish like going through, but it might help like some of the other pieces, cause there's also the timeline. This comes out at about the same time as parent teacher conferences or right before. So like, we have timelines where we have to like send it out, but then there'll be a follow-up conversation when they come in with their teacher. And for like the population maybe that you're discussing, like that will be, that conversation that's really important, that help make sure that there's further understanding.
Similarly, there was a mention earlier where if you fell off this, you would get a link to a website where there would be additional content you could do. Is this like worksheets and stuff?
Or activities.
Is that something that we could not have a link to? I mean, you're welcome to have a link to, but is that something that could be automatic? If your kid falls below this line in the folder that comes home with that kid is, is, you know, the worksheets.
I think that some of that's happening.
You're assuming someone's gonna have a printer, you're assuming someone's gonna have a computer. If it's a worksheet, printing out something is a pain in the butt for any parent, even someone who has a home computer and a printer, whereas if it comes home in their folder, I think they're a billion percent more likely to do it. Could we just automate that process? Whereas if your kid falls below this line, you will get the sheets that will help your kid in the folder.
You're assuming it's a worksheet. What we're saying is it might be some strategies for a parent to sit and read with their child.
Well, then that could be also written on a piece of.
100%, but I just simply wanted to make the point that the whole purpose is engagement with the parent and that looks very different than worksheets sending home.
And like having a variety. So we do have, we currently do have things that go home in folders automatically. And like we're continuing, this was a, this was our first year this last year and there's hiccups in the road and there's like processes that we want to implement more deeply or to shift. And I'll show you where we're doing some of the PD around that work. And yes, stuff home in folders, that's part of our plan. The additional piece would be having, for some families going to the website is a better option for them. For some, it's better to have it in the folder. Some families never open the folder, but they do their email, you know, like there's like all sorts of different ways that parents engage with district teachers.
And grandparents.
And grandparents, oh, for sure. I definitely have worked with several grandparents in this role. So then the next couple of lines are where we're gonna be talking about, based on the results, your child will get special instruction. And it goes through what the student, these two lines are the lines of the special instruction that they will be receiving as a result of being in that personal plan. So that's where like in year one, a lot of our energy went into ensuring that we had a range of supports that each kid who fell below the 25th percentile, each student, excuse me, everybody received something specialized according to their area of deficit. So this really intensified some of the really good work that was already in place so that we could ensure that everyone was getting that really good instruction. And then along with that, progress monitoring each week is done to, in that area to ensure that there's growth happening. And if it's not happening, what are we going to do? And so we're monitoring each week then, if there's been a shift, not a shift, and if there's nothing happening, what can we do differently or what needs to happen? And then that also gets communicated to families. So that's the whole, so just, cause we just, I wanna make sure they all understand. So this comes to families who has this child who falls underneath the 25th percentile and they're gonna have a personal reading plan with a goal, progress monitoring, and this is the communication about that noted. There'll be information about for families, about things that can be done at home. And teachers are highly involved in this process and they are having communications with families of, if their child is below that 25th percentile, yes.
You, you, you done?
Yes.
Oh, I have one comment to make and then one post.
Yes.
I studied this Act 20. It is a wonderful law and according to you, this law came into existence just last year, right? It will keep coming from the 3K, 4, 5, first grade, second grade, 3rd grade. Five years for that level of age group is exceptional, beautiful thing in the world, these five years, in my opinion, as well as my 37 years of a teaching experience. I loved everything of it. My question is, when they make a law, did they give you extra money to hire a few staff?
Um, there's a little bit of funding.
They just make a law and they go like, you are, you're all in all.
There is a little bit of spending that comes with it and it's like $871.
That's it?
Yeah, that's what we got.
Unfunded mandate, how about that?
No, they, they did make a law.
There's not any numbers I can cite for data, but I know.
So we can hire like six, seven good, I mean, teachers or teachers aid to help us accomplish in the five years.
Now, there are people who did ask for more education funding in this year's budget. It was requested by some individuals.
So only 800 bucks?
Right, and so we had paid for, yeah, it's a long story, I can go into that. But some of the other pieces to this is that we were a long ways in this journey, so we had already purchased the curriculum pieces, like we've already made the big purchases in years past, so you couldn't request money for the years beforehand and so.
The money can only be used for curriculum resources or staff training or that assessment piece, the EAMS Web, it cannot be used for salaries.
And then one thing that is really interesting, I'd like to share that it wasn't included, Brandon, there's a, it's like the Pearson EAMS Web graph. They update, so I sent this to you, like I put this in a more packet and then last like week, at the very end of the week, I got an update. So this was all in place for the fall. And I just want, just talking about this part of the graph, there's been updates. And so some of the things that are different, or there's gonna be different subtests that we need to do in kindergarten, like right here, you can see under 5K, phoneme segmentation wasn't clicked off, but it will be in the future. And so we had opted to stay with PSF because we know that's important, so we were doing that anyway. But it's nice that the state is moving in that direction and requiring PSF and that initial sound is dropping off. Another thing that's interesting is for first graders in the fall, in this form, on oral reading fluency, they head to know 18 words to be considered above the 25th percentile and it is shifted to five words. So what they're saying is like some of these shifts are due to, so when you talk about the 25th percentile and below, like you're looking at national norms, right? Like how kids performed, that there's been such a shift after COVID that these norms are be, are shifted that much. So it's pretty dramatic as far as what we'll be seeing differently.
And those are national, not just state, right?
Those are national norms.
So it'd be disappointing if they changed the norms because of Act 20, that, because that's just a Wisconsin thing, not every state is being asked to, that would be really disappointing if they.
Yeah.
I'm starting to think that it's not just a post-COVID thing. As more and more time has passed, it's post-COVID, I think this is a social media inspired, TikTok inspired, web content inspired.
I'll take that, take that point, it's something, there's a difference.
Yeah.
And I'm also gonna just throw out there, good, bad, or indifferent. When I was in kindergarten, I was either able to read or not able to read, there was no breaking it down into each of these minutia of skills, right? And so this is supposed to be helpful that you can diagnose someone who's struggling in reading, that you could drill down to that specific thing, but it's sometimes information overload, I, I think. Like a parent is like, so if they have three greens and four reds, where does, does that mean we're okay? Cause, you know what I mean? I just feel like sometimes it's too much information.
So if, for example, a hypothetical parent named me has been spending the summer trying to get his kid above 18 words per minute and it's been a pain in the butt, uh, there might be other parents who are not doing that and their kid is now reading seven words a minute and now they're gonna be above that 25%, whereas last year, they would have been in the flagrant red danger zone. Now they're gonna be told, low risk?
I didn't know that shifted that much until she just said that.
Yeah, I can't believe it.
First I've heard it.
So this is gonna go back to what I said again about the low risk cutoff and having no coding above that. Is there, if, if this is just state law mandated, but there's gotta be a way we could go from low risk to basic skill to achieving.
So 50th, 50th percentile is most definitely low risk.
Words.
I mean, it is low risk though.
But it wasn't low risk last year, it was devastatingly risky, five words.
For that number.
Oh, five words, I was saying 50th percentile, I'm so sorry.
But, but what has?
Yeah.
I, I think it's important, like field growth is kind of always underway. And I'm wondering how much of this they're using to, to start to understand more so about setbacks that might not, that might be presenting themselves earlier that like dyslexia or things like that, or these kind of, the minutia that can break stuff down so that you can kind of search for.
The minutia helps you understand there's something like dyslexia all the way.
I'm horrifically dyslexic and this, if I was a kid, you would have picked it up earlier, I would have, my trajectory would have looked really different because of, you know, I had to wait till I was in high school, college to like figure it out. So I think there's some value to it. I don't know how much of it is, it's just a lot of content for a parent who may have no background in linguistics or, you know, literacy or, you know, any of those sorts of things. So yeah, I mean, it's cool information, but I, I, is there some semblance of that maybe being the case or that they're using these data sets to kind of start to understand more so how kids learn to read?
This data, alright, so for all of your information, my background, my doctorate degree and my dissertation was all about early literacy and the things that you need to do, right? To, my passion is how do we get every kid reading? Like that's my goal. And I believe one of our main mandates as a district is to ensure that we have kids who can read. And these to me are the things that we need to know. We need to know their phonemic awareness, like we need, that's key. And like we can figure out right away then if dyslexia is involved. From there, like our total goal, like from just this standpoint, is of getting kids to 100 words per minute and that's a low bar. But if we can get all of our kids to 100 words per minute, we would be making astronomical gains because it's at that point that's not so laborious to read, that I can actually start thinking about things like the comprehension of the text and the main idea and all of our standards. So this is kind of that baseline foundation that needs to be in place because without this, kids cannot gain full letters. This is just baseline work. But we don't have that in all cases. And frequently, there's a, there's different things at play and one of them is poverty really, really impacts these scores and then disability can. And so we need to tease out, we don't wanna give someone a disability that doesn't have one. So it's like, are they responding to the instruction or not? And that kind of helps us tease out if dyslexia is involved or not. This information is really helpful when a student isn't reading where they should be and then I as a teacher can talk to a parent and be like, this is why this is happening. It's not an IQ thing frequently, it's because they're not distinguishing sounds and this is what we can do to work on it. And so these are the details that we need so that we can get our kids reading. That's kind of bottom line. But in the meantime, how do we communicate all of that out so that all of our families can digest it and take it in? Cause this is a lot and it shifts and it changes. And yep, I, I'm all in on Act 20, but it is a mandate and some of it's messy and we're in this messy middle as we filter through a law that, for lawmakers and then what really needs to happen from schools. So yep, maybe we'll get a more simplified communication process that is cleaner, but right now, this is where we are in order to meet the level of the law. Would be my thoughts.
I would still wish we'd ring that alarm bell earlier. If we wanna talk about raising grades throughout the school, if we wanna talk about those performance scores that we're seeing in high school, I know you've talked about this before, we should be able to tell a parent when their kid is reading eight words a minute, that they're not low risk. We should be able to say, hey, and I know that the standards may have gone down nationally and this, they continue to go down.
And but we might not be, we haven't, I'm just telling you that it changed? I don't know what we're gonna do as a district yet.
Correct, but, but I'm, but I'm just saying that, that we need to be able to send a signal as a school that 45th percentile up to 100th percentile is not the same thing. And we need to be ringing alarm bells, not just for the most devastating, disadvantaged kids, but we need to be ringing alarm bells earlier, you know, you're below 50%. That's, that's an easy cutoff.
I would say you're not at risk at 40th percentile. It's not percent, it's percentile.
Correct.
And those are, and I would say you're really not at risk.
Percentile could be worse than percent.
Under a 30th percentile, like, and that research would kind of bear that out.
I mean, the research, I mean, we're really looking at it, we really wanted to figure out, just to parents, right? Like, cause a lot of the genetics for the, my, one of my kids is horribly dyslexic, Sam horribly dyslexic, we could find that out, but that's just, you know, is that reasonable? I don't know, you know? So I think for reasonably, like this is a reasonable way to approach it, I just, I feel like families in poverty, we know that they're already struggling with like literacy, so giving them a very like dense, you know? Yeah, I don't know. I love the content, truly.
When you say alarm bells, you're talking about creating a sense of urgency, right?
I, yeah, I'm not talking about this isn't useful. The data is great, the message is great. I'm saying that when you communicate this to the parent, it should include as much information as possible that isn't go to the website and if you have free time, maybe download this. It should say, here's where your kid is, you need to do this. It needs to have a greater sense of urgency. And I think the sense of urgency needs to be moved up, frankly. If you wanna bring scores up for everybody, we should be focusing on more than just those that legally mandate us to sound alarm bells.
And so also remember that when it's target time, every single kid, regardless of what percentile they're at, they are receiving instruction at their level of challenge. So because we're not sending official notification, doesn't mean that we're not addressing it for all students, right? So I, I just want you to think that anybody who's above that 25th percentile, we're like, keep on, keepin' on, right? You're doing great. When we talk about our growth quadrants, we expect all kids to grow more than a year's growth.
I, I brought this up for you before though, like my kid fell below line and I got one of these notes and I got handed a Haggerty sheet, basically. They said, do this with your kid every night. She's like, oh, I didn't know that was a thing. Did that with my kid every night, their score went through the roof. But they were pretty close to that cutoff and all I could think of is, why the heck don't they send this form back with every kid? I mean, if you can improve somebody's scores 20, 30 percentile by having a parent read the Haggerty sheet for one minute a night, why don't we as a school just make our school that much more rigorous and improve the scores for everybody?
I, I don't think that's reasonable. I think that there's parents that you can send as many notes as you want and A, they might be able to read them, B, that would be able. B, they might be able to comprehend them, and C, they might not care enough to implement them. So I think there's like a certain assumption there that's kind of driving that, that says that just because we we want them to do it, they're going to. I think there's, you know, relationships with education that parents have had that are, you know, not as as positive as they could have been, and so they're impacting their 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 willingness to participate with their child. So I think there's, there's like some repair that has nothing to do with what, how many times they're going to read with their kid. I think there's some repair that, like, in this repair that happens over generations and like unpacks over time of like making sure that we are supporting, and I think this district does a great job of like a love for learning and like, let's come together. And as the kid gets more comfortable, and each generation goes through this school experience, and it feels better, they're more likely to do it with their kids. So like, I wish the needle could move like, like, super fast, but the truth of the matter is, is there's so many complicated variables that take generations to unpack.
See, I reject that argument.
Oh.
It is true, everything you said about the generations it's going to take to change the culture of parents. But you're saying, therefore, don't bother sending this material home because the parents won't bother to do it with their kids.
No.
And even if twenty percent of parents won't bother to do it with their kids, some of them might.
I'm not saying don't send it home. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not saying don't send it home.
Okay.
I'm saying that there probably, if we if we really want to expect a a vast change in in outcomes, we're probably going to have to look at other variables that aren't covered in this particular effort.
Well, that's hard selection. You're saying if you want to have a vast change in outcomes, wait for four more generations to go by, and then maybe parents will care more. That doesn't really change things for us. My point was, if you can send a sheet home with a kid that has a reasonable chance of upping their percentile scores, even if they're not falling below low risk, why aren't we maybe increasing the rigor? And your argument was, because the parents won't care and they won't do it with their kids.
No.
That might be true of some parents.
No, my argument is not.
But those parents are unreachable anyway. If they're not going to do it when you send home a sheet, they're not going to do it when you send home two sheets. They're not going to do it when you send home three sheets.
That was my argument.
But there are plenty of parents who still would. And what I'm saying is, these standards are low. And I know we've heard Iftikhar talk about it before. We've talked about our, you know, scores at the school before. We've talked about raising standards before, and I think that the first and best opportunity to do that is in five K, grade one, grade two, where literally a minute a night from a parent can make a lifetime of difference. And I think that we should be pushing this much harder. And I think that these standards, as you had pointed out, have lowered, and they lowered from the year before. And there was quite a lot of hullabaloo when they lowered the year before that. And there's a point where the state standards are fine, we'll do what's legally required, but could we maybe consider ringing the alarm bell earlier and pressing the urgency earlier? And sending this home for kids who maybe be in the, oh my God, the fifty-fifth percentile might be able to benefit from some of this material.
And my point was not not to send it home. I never said, don't send it home. I said, send it home. I said, send it home, but let's figure out if there's other things we can do to supplement it that can overcome some of the barriers that might be preventing families from using it. That's what I'm saying. So not, don't send it home, not, don't send early alarm bells. I think all those things are absolutely necessary and needed. What I am saying, though, is there's some other things that aren't being kind of thought about or addressed from my perspective that might improve parents' likelihood of being able to access that information in ways that are useful to their kids and spend that one minute that's totally like, you know, um, change.
And and as you know, that requires in-depth work in the community with social workers, with potentially anthropologists, with generations of change, with dealing with socioeconomic issues, dealing with environmental justice, dealing with all kinds of things. And those are wonderful, and we can do those. But I'm saying we could, for the price of a Xerox,
And I'm still not saying don't send it home.
of the chance that one student in this school performs better. And I know it can happen, this is happening with my kid.
But.
I got sent home a piece of paper that raised my kid's scores. Because I was too stupid to know I needed to do this with my kid.
But for the price of two Xerox, you could also make it a reading level that they could comprehend.
Well, then let's do two Xeroxes.
There, I'm definitely asking.
But my my point being is.
Of course, cool. At what point do you send like this letter?
Can I, can I back it up one step before that? Thank you. Cool. You and I had this conversation about this Hagerty sheet. I just.
I didn't realize it was like, hey, your sheet.
I just want to reiterate that all of those numbers are minuscule scores that all extrapolate up to reading level. I get nervous when, I think you said lowering standards about twenty times during your conversation, and that's okay. That is one hundred percent okay. But the words that she said, that that number went from twenty-five to five, tonight was the first time I ever heard it. There is no teacher in Black River Falls that heard it unless they're watching this. And so I just want to be clear that when we keep saying that we've lowered the standards, it means somebody somewhere has, but it doesn't mean in our classrooms in Black River Falls.
We haven't lowered the standards. The state has, the, the, nationally this has, and they've, they've gone down because performance has gone down.
I just want to be clear when we're talking to these, that we're not always talking Black River Falls School District. Could you talk to the worksheets, the Hagerty sheet that you were discussing?
So Hagerty is a phonemic awareness, so that's when I was talking about phoneme segmentation. So what, um, I don't know what was on your sheet. I thought it was a nonsense word fluency sheet, so.
Yeah, that that was it, I think so.
And so, um.
Except half the words weren't nonsense words. There were words like fib and ilk and things like that.
So, um, I would, Hagerty does, it works on phoneme segmentation, so I might say the word cat, and then the child would go cat, and that's all done verbally.
No, it was the, it was the first one you were talking about.
Oh, a nonsense word. So that was some, and then that was another sheet, which we're working on that. So that's where I was talking about professional development. I wouldn't make the recommendation that we would ever send home a nonsense word fluency sheet because nonsense word fluency is a good measure of where a student is, and it's not something that you practice. What we want students to be able to do is read words, right? Like, we want them to be able to read words quickly. And but without memorizing, like, I can memorize what cat looks like with a C, the A, and the T. I don't want my child to memorize cat. I want them to like go and learn it, cat. I want them to see those phonemes. And so that's why we measure a child's phonics with nonsense word fluency so that I can distinguish between, do they know the sounds and they can blend them? Or have they just memorized what cat or dog looks like? The reason for that is that at third grade, we could, children can memorize those word as holes all the way up until third grade, and then we really start expanding and adding suffixes and compound words and lots more. Their ability to just memorize the look of words is done. And so that's where you'll see like progressions where elementary schools that have kids that are word memorizers, um, they all like be progressing at average or above, and they hit third grade and they drop in their comprehension, or they drop in their ability to read, and that's because they're a word memorizer versus a sound memorizer. So we do need to make sure that that's like, it's like a distinction, right? So it seems logical, why wouldn't I just practice nonsense word fluency? Well, it's not the best practice. We want to spend our time practicing with words, which I'm sure you've done that too with your child at home. Um, and so, um, that's something we want to make sure that all of our educators really understand deeply about the difference between what's good practice and what's a good assessment.
So regardless of what the sheet is, the point being is that we have interventions and exercises that we know raise kids' scores.
Yes.
Do they stop raising kids' scores once the kid hits the forty-eighth percentile? Or do they continue to raise people's scores, even if you're in forty-ninth percentile, if the student does the same sheet?
At that point, I would rather.
Do they raise their score, or does it not matter?
At forty-eighth percentile, like the recommendation would be, read with your child and have conversations about that text. So once that child is reading and they're average, so average being that fortieth to sixtieth percentile range, sometimes you can go into the thirty-fifth. Once that child is in that average range, the bigger deal is vocabulary, comprehension, knowledge about the world. And that's how you build a really strong reader going into future. That's equally important as being able to decode. So that's where like that difference would lie. And so like putting a lot of energy into reading a lot faster isn't what I would make a recommendation to a family about. I would make the recommendation that you put that energy into reading, talking, vocabulary, that type of growth. Because it's the combination of those two things, the ability to decode, and then what you know about the world and the words you know that makes a reader. And they have equal power.
And so if I could ask one more question for clarification, because I know that this is absolutely your area of expertise. So a student who is, is it typical that most readers will have some areas of much faster growth and some areas that they struggle with? And eventually, when they start putting all of those minutia scores together, right, as long as they're all moving? Or do you want all the scores green first and then move them? What is typical?
So like, in a perfect, like a very, very most typical child, they'll all move together, but that doesn't happen all the time. Especially in your brightest kids, like, they will really quickly just be able to see like, um, they'll be able to just, they just read like really quickly. And so then that PSF thing becomes trickier, and it's because they've already really moved past that skill as being necessary. In fact, a lot of adults who are really good readers will struggle with some of those PSF tests because you're a reader. Like, you're not thinking about those sounds in that way any longer. And so is this set of assessments has diminishing returns as far as the farther we go in phoneme segmentation? Like, we could work really, really hard at that where it's not going to have as much value later on. So to answer your question, there are typical profiles where everything moves together, but that's going to be a, you know, just a section of their population. Your kids who are more advanced, they're going to have funkier looking, um, profiles, like colors sometimes. Like, this is a high-achieving student, and that's what their profile looks like. And students then at the low end too, like sometimes you'll see like, oh, they're really good in vocabulary. So that means that, you know, they are, they hear the words and they know what they are. And then just everything else is super low, and that can be something like red flag or dyslexia, things like that. So like the difference in scores matters, and then if your whole range of students. So I'm sorry, I could go on and on.
No, I I want you to go on and on. So the one question I have then is, in your professional opinion, last year, if you had a kid coming into first grade reading ten words a minute, would you have alerted the parents?
At ten words a minute as a, okay.
And then this year, would that still happen, is the follow-up question.
That's a very good question. So I thought that like this, that was high as far as like, so I've been in this game for a while, so for a first grader coming in, I thought whatever that number was, it was eighteen. I thought that's a high number. Um, ten words, you're kind of in that, oof, like, I would want to have a conversation with that family for sure.
So this year, if five is the fiftieth percentile, are we going to have conversations when a kid's coming in at eight words a minute?
Can I come back to you and talk to you about like, was, like, as we formalized that plan, what that's going to look like? I really appreciate time to work through it, and I shared that information. It's not about a lowering of the standards, like now the twenty-fifth percentile is here. What that's telling us is that the number of students who have taken that test, now the twenty-fifth percentile, the kids in the bottom twenty-fifth percentile, that's where they're scoring. And it used to be all the way up to eighteen. There's a change in the population. So it's not that the expectations have lowered, that there's a shift in what we're seeing in students. And so that's what's that's, it's alarming and also what we're talking about.
Thank you for all the information. Yes. Any more questions?
Oh, can I just share one last thing?
We have to go through the policy, so yes, you certainly can.
Um, really, really fast. I had one more. I thought maybe, uh, Granny, can you go one more over? Uh, no, 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 maybe it's not here. I, it's neither here nor there. Okay. I was just going to just talk through, I'll do it next time I talk, what the process looks like for how we plan out over the next year.
Very great.
Thank you.
So we are going to enforce Act Twenty with eight hundred dollars, right? I just wanted to.
Nice summary.
How it can be possible.
So we already had so much, the infrastructure in place that are the big costs. Um, the biggest issue is making this communication streamlined so that teachers, because we were already doing this assessment, but we were using DIBELS, which that's another thing, but we were already doing a very similar assessment and had that bad work done. So it's been a huge lift getting the training done for the new assessment.
This is phonics.
And it's phonics.
It's, yeah, DIBELS, right?
Yep, phonics and fluency.
Thank you, Nicole, from Montana, PhD.
So here is an example of a policy that the board is supposed to approve and have on record before the school year starts. The technical date was by July one, but there are not Act Twenty policy police, and so it is coming to you during our July meeting for your approval. Really, what they're used to, every school was required to have a promotion and retention policy previously. So this is, um, some of the pieces that were added are pieces from our previous policy. And you will see that it includes all the notifications that are required as part of Act Twenty. It does talk about, um, the, if you want to talk about creating an alarm bell and rubber hitting the road, it's here below the twenty-fifth percentile, you will not move on to fourth grade. That's significant. That's a significant, significant change of practice.
And can we sound the alarm bell early in third grade on that one?
Oh, for sure.
Not like, not like mid, mid, midterms.
So let me tell you something that the principals that we put together, I know Melanie was at Forest Street at the time. I'm sorry, I don't remember if you, I think you and Laura were at Red Creek. Um, we called the parents in of the kids that were just absent, that they reached the definition of truancy, that they were read on both of our assessments, and we invited those parents. We thought maybe we would make it a little bit higher stakes by, and I understand it does not feel very responsive, but we just struggled to get the attention of some of the families, and so we invited them here. And we had a whole slide deck for each one of the kids, and we would say, here's where third grade expectations are, here's where your child is, or here's where kindergarten expectations are, here's where your child has been all year. These are all the things that we have tried. Can you talk us through some of the things that you have tried? Are there things we could do to help you help your child? We went through all of this, and then we would say, we believe that your child should be retained based off of what we're seeing, and and the lack of attendance was always a part of it. And we had a few parents that were, um, their eyes were very, very, very wide open. And if they decided not to retain, or even if they did retain, we wanted an action plan for transitioning into the next school year. What are you going to do different? What would you like us to do different in order to support your child next year? And we tried to create a custom plan for each one of them. You'd have to help me with the numbers. I want to say it was five to ten kids per grade level. Is that fair?
Probably less than that.
Less?
Yeah.
Okay. And so these were the kids that were not responding to instruction or were missing school, all of that. We had some good participation for a while, and we had some parents that were just angry about the whole thing. They were resentful and felt that we were blaming, and some just basically said, I send them as often as I can, the rest is your job. And got it, right? Got it. So we've, we've tried to alarm bell, right, to create a sense of urgency to partner because while it, whether it's a nonsense word worksheet or engaging in your child's academic life in some way, shape, or form, all of them have returns. And and that's what we were really trying to find a way to give them all the tools that they could just engage in some way. Even the way they talk about school, could they talk about school as as a place where you have the opportunities to go learn things as opposed to, um, well, they're always, they're trying to get me in trouble because I don't send you, or those people are out, you know, whatever. Just that whole concept, even those things net significant returns, and that's just a real puzzle that we just haven't seemed to be able to, because of so many.
Well, and with the alarm bells, and this is getting to what Michaela has talked about, there might be some, some of these parents that if their kids are doing that bad, there might be a parental problem, there might be a family problem, there could be a social problem. You might not be able to break through in every case, and it doesn't mean it's not worth trying. But you also may net higher returns, higher up the ladder with a gentler push. You might be able to find the students who are just doing eh, and just be able to poke a little bit. And and all of these are the same averages we're raising. I mean, your average will go up if the kids in the middle and the kids at the top go up too. And and I feel like maybe putting ten percent of the investment that we put into the bottom four percent of students in the middle could net huge returns. Instead of simply saying, this is good enough, you're fine. I think we really need to be pushing that.
And remember our quadrants where we say all of our our grade levels that had growth in that top quadrant that was high growth. That's not high growth from your bottom kids. That's high growth from every single student who takes the assessment. So we very much watch and monitor and support the growth of every student, whether they are the bottom spring student or the top. It's more challenging to move some of your top performers, but that absolutely is part of our conversations. So the policy needs your approval. If you are interested tonight, or if you want to wait, um, I would appreciate it being done before school starts. before school starts, but your pleasure.
The only changes were the ones that were highlighted in color higher up, correct?
Yes.
This change, that's the entirety of the change.
Yep. That whole parental notification, actually the whole um, uh, this is the new policy and it has been updated to align with Act Twenty. We did not have a policy that uh, was, had all those definitions that are inherent to Act Twenty only. We take this stance when it comes to a retention conversation that um, we would like it to be a mutual agreement, um, but we have drawn a hard line with a few parents, especially when attendance has been um, extremely uh, challenging and they've not been responsive to any of the supports that we've put out there. And we definitely have some older, families of older students who want us to retain their child as a consequence for their child not doing what the parent has expected of them. And there is zero academic research to support that retention and so we try our best to dissuade them of that. Questions or comments about the policy, the language?
Really just looking for a motion, having a motion to chapter policy.
I'll second.
Alright, a motion in a second to approve the Act Twenty policy. All, there's some, I'm saying aye.
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 All ayes.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Motion passes. Um, so moving on to eight point two, special education data report.
So this has been a, quite a few years since we have looked at this data together. Um, I think twenty eighteen was the last time that we looked together as a district at this data and I wanted to know how we're doing as a district, um, what trends can we see in our data? This year, we're gonna be engaging in something called the procedural compliance self-assessment for special education as a whole district. Uh, we have to do this every five years and this is good information here that will feed into our self-assessment as well. So the first slide here is just the number of special education staff that we have across the district. So district wide, we have two school psychologists, five speech language pathologists, one occupational therapist, one adaptive uh, physical education teacher. And then the gray and orange are the number of teachers and paraprofessionals in each building. This next slide is uh, looking at the initial evaluations, reevaluations, and then the total evaluations. These are raw numbers. So as we go through the slides, I'll talk about raw numbers and percentages. These ones are all raw numbers, meaning that sixty-two that first block, we had sixty-two initial evaluations in two thousand and eighteen. An initial evaluation for special education means that it's a student who hasn't received special education, doesn't have an IEP in place. And then the orange one hundred and seven are the number of reevaluations that we did that year. So those are students who have IEPs and once every three years, we have to do a reevaluation to make sure that they continue to um, that they're still eligible to receive services. And then the total number is one hundred and sixty-nine for two thousand and eighteen and then those numbers for last year. So we had roughly the same as about two thousand and eighteen.
And just as a point, um, our percent of students with disabilities has continued to climb during that time because our overall enrollment is decreasing. So as our overall enrollment gets lower and our number of evals stays the same, our ratio is well above the state average. The state average is about eighteen percent of the total student population is identified as a student with a disability. We are at twenty-four percent, was our most recent.
Nineteen, nineteen.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Not on the last year report card, but go ahead, I'll look it up while you talk.
So this is the total number of val- evaluations, raw numbers, both initial and reevals. Since two thousand and eleven, we had data back to. Um, and obviously there's a dip in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, when the pandemic was affecting everybody and there was just not the number of referrals coming in. This is the number of reevaluations for that same time period. Again, raw numbers, raw um, reevaluations done. So this one, the gray bars are the number of initial evaluations and then the orange is a percentage of students that qualified for special education. So in two thousand and eleven, there were twenty-six initial evaluations and of those twenty-six evaluations, seventy-seven percent of them qualified for special education services. And if you fast forward to this past year, we had fifty-nine initial evaluations and of those fifty-nine initial evaluations, only thirty-seven percent of them placed into special education, meaning that we had not only a higher number of evaluations, but less of them qualified for special education services and I'll dive into that a little bit later. Previously, when we've looked at this, and I know none of you were on the board at the time, when, the last time we looked at this in two thousand and eighteen, um, but it was a practice that we engaged in looking at the number of referrals, um, the number of students who are white and students who are non-white. And so back in two thousand and twelve, seventy-nine percent, these are percentages, seventy-nine percent of the referrals were for white students and twenty-one percent were for non-white. Last year, it was seventy-five percent white and twenty-five percent non-white. And here, one of the things that I wanted to point out on this slide to.
What's the student body population percentage?
Great question. So in our district last year, we had seventy percent of our students were white and thirty percent were non-white. So a little disproportionality there, um, but fairly close.
Thank you.
What's interesting though is that the state had said, probably five, ten years back, that they considered school districts to be over identifying students for special ed if you were in the fifteen to eighteen percentile. So if more than fifteen or eighteen percent of your students were qualifying for special education, as practice, you were over identifying students. Now, because of learning more about child development, learning more about depression and anxiety and other diagnosis, they've actually increased that rate to twenty percent. So they're saying anything over twenty percent, um, your district is over identifying students. From our seeds data, we were at nineteen percent this last year. Um, next slide. So the gray are raw numbers of, of referrals that came from that agency. So Birth to Three are Birth to Three uh, public agency. Offsite refers to any of our 4K partners, uh, Forest Street, Red Creek, Middle School and High School. So the gray are the raw numbers of referrals that came from those locations. The orange bars are the percentages from the percentage of referrals and then the black is the percentage that's placed at that location. So Birth to Three had ten referrals last year. They accounted for seventeen percent of all initial referrals that we received. And when we completed the evaluation, sixty percent of the referrals from Birth to Three qualified for special education services. So then if you work your way across, we had four referrals from offsite locations, uh, which accounted for seven percent of the total number of referrals. Forty-three percent of the students that were evaluated qualified for special education services at Forest Street. And as you see, the trend there is that usually as students go through our system, that evaluation goes down because we wanna catch disability early and intervene early. Um, the outcomes are better for students that way. Okay, so this one is for the last ten years, so two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-five. And this looks at the, the percentage placement for each of those sites. So Birth to Three averaged for all of their referrals in the last ten years, seven, about seventy-five percent of them were placed, meaning they qualified for special education services. Offsite locations, um, they had sixty-three percentage placement rates. Forest Street had about fifty-eight. Red Creek had sixty, sixty-one. Middle School had about thirty-eight percent and the high school was at forty-three. So that, that to me means that the higher you go in a school setting, if we haven't intervened early, it's less likely that it's a disability. So some other special education data. Last year alone, we had three hundred and sixty-four students with IEPs. We had fifty-nine initial evaluations and another one hundred reevaluations that we did. Of the one hundred and fifty-nine evaluations, um, eight of those students moved to five oh fours was, was some of the data that you guys had asked for before. So how many students graduate, how many students moved to five oh fours, how many students are dismissed? Um, of the fifty-nine initial evaluations, twelve were from Birth to Three. One was from the county, four were from doctors, seventeen were from parents and family and twenty-five of them were from teachers. So of those fifty-nine initial evaluations, thirty-five students did not qualify for special education. And one question that we dive into as a special education team are, who didn't qualify? Where are those referrals coming from? And so just to dive a little bit into the students who did not qualify for special education, we looked at thirty-three percent from Birth to Three did not qualify. A hundred percent from the county did not qualify. Seventy-five percent of doctor referrals did not qualify. Eighty-three percent of parent referrals did not qualify and sixty percent of teacher referrals did not qualify. So one of the biggest takeaways from that is that we have some education that we need to do about. What, what should we refer for? But I would never discourage a family from having a conversation or asking is, uh, special education referral appropriate? We would reject that conversation. So also of the one hundred reevaluations, um, nine students were dismissed from special education, meaning that they were found to not have a disability any longer. And then last year, there were thirty-two students in twelfth grade. Twenty-five of those students graduated, two moved, but they were on track to graduation, so we can assume that they graduated. Uh, once they leave our doors, we don't necessarily have access to that information. Um, two are returning next year, that's part of their plan is to return next year. Uh, we did have three students uh, dropout.
They turned eighteen and they made that choice. Go ahead.
So once you, once you are registered as an IEP, it means you are bound to graduate?
No. No.
Not necessary?
It means that you're entitled to supports to help you access your general education curriculum.
So it is not, once I am an IEP, it doesn't mean that I will eventually graduate?
There's no guarantee.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no guarantee once you have an IEP. And then I, another fallacy that we often hear is that my student is failing their classes. How can that be if they have an IEP? An IEP does not guarantee good grades and it doesn't guarantee graduation. What it does is put needed support so that the student can access their learning.
Yes, I, I noticed that when I was helping IEP students back in the days, the parents used to ask how my child got F. It is impossible, it is guaranteed to have a, you know, fail and toss, they have a different grading system, it's supposed to be P, pass. So I asked teachers, they gave me the same answer, it's not guaranteed. Right?
Can you give us like eight per second?
So a student, just theoretically, we'd have to dive into each student because there's a lot of reasons why a student would not be doing well academically. One thing could be, a student refuses to engage in any classwork in the classroom and they sit there like a bump on the log. If they're not, they have to have the onus to do the work. If we say that it would help them to have additional support in math and so they're gonna learn some additional math facts with a teacher, we can put that support in place, but if the student refuses to do their, their classwork, refuses to engage in testing, they're not gonna get a passing grade because they have to do the work, so.
And my second question is, you have five school pathologists.
It's PP.
It's PP, five. Do you think it is a lot? Just wondering.
We have a really good ratio of SLPs in our district. Um, they have a, a solid caseload. I actually this past year looked at other districts and what their averages for caseloads were and we are solidly right in that range.
Those five are not all one hundred percent, there's a couple of them, Granny Kirk, that are like point eight and a.
Point seven.
Only one is full time.
Well, one is full time.
But they're close, they're like point eight, point seven, so they're close, but not full time.
I was helping or teaching in another high school. I was teaching last year in another high school, we had three thousand students and they have one speech pathologist. And we have one thousand six hundred and three students in this school district and we have a five is, is speech pathologist. I was just curious if it is, but now she says not full time.
And high school is definitely our fewest number of speech and language students. It is extremely heavy at Forest Street and Red Creek. So a lot of students um, graduate from the need for those services as they get older.
And my another question is, is school psychologist? A school psychologist is like an MD, like a Dr. Kettlin. Who is, what is his degree, his or her?
Her. So we have two female school psychologists, Lori Murphy and Emily Newell. They have master's degrees, uh, I don't think either of them have doctorates. Um, but they have lots of experience in administering a bazillion different assessments for students. So they really do a lot of the like work for the evaluations for students for special education. There's testing, like formal testing of what you would probably think of in your head, what that looks like, having pen and paper and doing those types of things. They also do lots of classroom observations. They develop behavior intervention plans for students. They can work in, they often come to our, each building's cast meetings to hear about students who there's some concerns about and offer up ideas for teachers to try as well. So they have really deep toolboxes for intervening with students.
Shelley, out of curiosity, do you know the twelfth grade dropout rate for students not on these plans?
I don't, I've tapped my habit of considering, you find that out.
Because it's, it's ten percent, you know, three out of thirty, if, if that's, I mean, is it in the realm of five percent for regular, non, not regular, but non?
Non-special education.
Non-special education students. Um, if so, that still seems like a pretty good rate. Seems like the program's doing pretty well based on knee jerk numbers. But it'd be nice to be able to compare and be able to say, you know, our, our, you know.
Yep. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about this, Melanie. Uh, very delicately talked about the percent of placement and there was another graph that also talked about percent of placement. And we've had a previous conversation about special education services in which Casey was talking about the volume uh, that we ask of our teachers. And so um, and one of the earlier slides had the amount of staffing per building. Number three, I just wanna highlight for a moment that this is the, uh.
Slide two.
Thank you. Yeah, teachers to Paris. So this is how many we're supposed to have and last year, the high school had one that was just virtual and had an opening all year. Um, the middle school went without one of their people for more than half the year. Um, so when we look at the numbers, um, what I get frustrated with, and I appreciate that you said it because I agree one hundred percent, if there's a genuine concern about a student, we absolutely should go through the whole evaluation process. It is a thorough and in-depth and time-consuming process. The challenge is when we talk about the percent of placement from some of our offsite places, um, some of our community agencies, when you are going through, there's, there's probably thirty staff hours in each evaluation and maybe that's light and, and only a thirty percent placement rate, seventy percent aren't qualifying. I feel like we're spinning our wheels doing all these evaluations as opposed to um, looking for other solutions other than assuming disability right away. And so the board has heard at some expulsion hearings that, um, when a parent is frustrated that their child isn't being successful, they say, well, they were supposed to be special education, the school didn't do anything about that. It's possible, we went through the whole referral process and the student was, couldn't be placed because they um, did not uh, meet the qualifications of having that disability. But if there's some way that we could help to educate uh, parents and our staff and um, uh, other agencies around what some of those other pieces. some of those other pieces that we could look at before going that deep into a referral, that would be really helpful because the placement rates are really at a low right now from where we used to be.
Well, if, if there are forty employee hours for evaluation, would it be something that could take, say, twenty, twenty-five employee hours to create some sort of PSA and send it out to these organizations? Is it something that might be worth the investment of?
Time up.
Half a week's work to save us work down the road?
It, it sure could. People would have to be open to that information because just as we are trying to communicate that, there have been times that outside agencies have been like, oh, your kid's in trouble. Get him on an IEP, then he can't be expelled. That's one of those myths that exist out there. A myth, right? Exactly.
And there's also policies and procedures in place in some of those other organizations that warrant, um, negating the liability of not having looked into it. So there's, there's that as well.
Right.
Yeah. Also, as part of my work, I'm working with other directors in our region and, um, the special education director of CISA four to put something together and gather a list of all of our doctors in our area. We've seen a huge uptick just in the last two years of prescriptions for IEPs. And it's not, it's not a bad thing for a doctor to write a prescription for an IEP in a sense. However, it sets a parent up for failure if they think it's an automatic thing. If they're walking into a school door thinking that they can just have an IEP tomorrow. There's a long strenuous evaluation that has to happen in order to determine eligibility. And so how we're talking about it is a very important thing, but that is work that I'm engaging in, um, with our directors in our region.
One time I asked IEP team, uh, the full team, like, you know, in a conference, what if the student is three grade eleven behind? He or she is supposed to be IEP. They said, no. If anybody's two, three grade level behind, doesn't mean they're IEP. That was interesting answer. I just followed.
There's lots of reasons why a student could be three grade levels behind. It doesn't mean that they always have a disability. They could have had really poor attendance for a few years.
And that's actually one of the disqualifiers. If you go through the evaluation process and you've missed, uh, I don't remember what the percentage is of school days, you legally can't identify them as a student with a disability because the state says they haven't had the opportunity to learn, so.
That's rough.
It, it absolutely is because then think of that parent caught in that cycle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I also learned if the parents were IEP when they were kids, their children could be IEP, it could be hereditary. I, I learnt in different school system. That was my boy. So I met those parents. They say, we, they are our kids. We were IEP too. Interesting.
Shelley, that data point, does that convey to parents when they come requesting an IEP or looking for one? Can you basically give them the head, like, we're not saying that there's this. We're just to let you know before you even start this process, we can't legally. I mean, it seems like you could head some things off in the past by letting them know. Like if you, you've already missed thirty days, we can't possibly.
You're not going to qualify.
You're not going to qualify no matter what. Like you have to bring the attendance up before we.
We absolutely have that conversation. So one part of their referral is a home input form where the teacher who's filling out the referral has a conversation with parents and you have to ask them all those questions. What's your child good at? What part of school is so hard? And so there's this whole conversation that happens, whether it's a parent ask or a teacher referral. And, um, the teacher then has to fill in their attendance, their last vision screening, hearing, hearing screening, just to try to check some of the boxes. That could be an easy one. But it still doesn't release the district from the responsibility of following through the evaluation of the parent wants to.
It is helpful. Just recently, I had somebody from the county reach out to me. They had a student come into their care and the student has moved around quite a bit, been in different agencies and attendance has been a concern. And so they asked if that student could be evaluated for special education and how does attendance impact that? And so we had the discussion that how significantly? We didn't have the details between either of us at this time at exactly what, how the attendance was impacted, like how severely. And so we did have a discussion about, we need to look at that before we put in a referral. So they appreciated that, knowing that that could have been a lot of time spent if we need to work on attendance first.
Melanie, one data point that'd be interesting to see is, the twenty-five kids that graduated, how many of them are going on to secondary education? Does their IEP roll forward?
So it changes. Once they go, let's say they go to college. IEPs, those fall under IDA, the federal law of IDA. It will get shifted into a five oh four at that time and each university determines what are the accommodations that they have. There's, um, to qualify for special education, there's two parts, two prompts. So one, they have to be eligible under a specific category and they have to have a need for specially designed instruction. And so what happens when a student goes to a university, for instance, they'll still have the accommodations if they had an IEP. They'll have an accommodation of whatever was listed in there that the university has to offer. But that specially designed instruction is not something that exists once they go off.
I guess with that, I'm just curious, like, how many of our kids have had this? Did they, did they go on to secondary education?
So I don't have that information with me today. However, we do, there's a lot of different indicators that we do in special education. Parent surveys are one of them and we just completed a parent survey. So I have, as a side note, I have information from parents. Uh, or we'll be getting that soon. And then we also have indicator reporting of outcomes for students and that is subject to them actually completing this survey. So that is in progress right now. And as soon as I get that information, I can share that back with you.
Yeah, I can just email. I'd just be curious, like, how, like, how many of these kids is it?
I just checked our percentage. So in twenty eighteen, the beginning of these data charts are, as a district, we were fifteen point nine percent special education. And this past year, it was twenty point eight, so about a five percent increase. Red Creek alone was twenty-five point five. So that was the singular number that I was thinking had grown so much, so. But it is often that Red Creek has the most dense population because Forest Street, we're still identifying and by high school, many have graduated from those services, so.
Kind of ask, you mentioned parent surveys. Do we have like exit interviews or some equivalent? Like if you graduate after you've been on IEP and it's improved your scores, do we ever try to get feedback from these students? Is that something we're allowed to even do?
So the surveys that we send out are for students who graduated with an IEP.
Okay.
So an IEP had to be in place at the time of graduation and then we follow up on that.
Excellent.
But we also do, anybody who's, who currently has an IEP, K twelve, even early childhood through twelfth grade, we sent out postcards for surveys. So if anybody has a IEP, they got a yellow, little yellow postcard. I sent out about three hundred and fifty of them this year.
Any other questions about special education? I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Melanie.
All right. Around eight point three.
I am back to talk about academic standard adoption. So every July, I speak for the board and ask for the, for my adoption of, uh, the student academic standards. This year, um, they are largely the same as last year. There hasn't been an update from DPI except for in the area of Byed. There are some updated standards that, um, we started working on last year with the PE department, which we were excited about. Um, which is, that's funny sentence to put together. Our teachers are excited about the shift in standards, but they actually were. And so, um, that's, if there's any questions about this, I'd be happy to ask. This, um, pending adoption by the board, um, this will be posted on the website. So I'll change the date of law then.
Tell me the motion to adopt that.
I'll second it.
All right, motion of second. All in favor of?
Aye.
When I say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nobody opposed.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
How short is this report?
That was awesome.
The discussion went very good, but it's a long one. It's a discussion.
Yes, um, two point one monthly expenditures.
That's important.
You have all the information in your package?
Yes.
You have any questions forward? Otherwise, we're looking for approval.
This might be completely relevant. There was a big pile of voided checks before the Schulze's Ace Hardware in there. Is there, is that just a thing that happens that I just haven't noticed in the previous ones or?
I'm not sure. I'll have to look into it.
There's like ten or twelve voided checks. And I was like, what's up with those fucking checks?
I was guessing that it probably like, we started printing the wrong number.
I, I figured it was something. I figured somebody had a bad day there. It was like voided, 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 Schulze. And I was like, wow.
I'll take a look into it and see what you guys think about it.
All right, I'll move to approve the July.
I second it.
Expenditures. Right, um, on every schedule, trust me on that.
Aye.
Oppose?
No one.
No one. Passed it. All right, um, district administrators report.
Thank you for remembering. But I think it's biennium budget, vocal impact first? I appreciate your interest in being.
It's just checks.
I'm sorry.
This is Brandon's first show. Let's not cut him short, right?
I'm sorry. I don't want him to feel bad.
Actually, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say a word.
He's gonna say, yep, that's her.
So I just wanted to give you a couple of updates now that the biennium budget is passed for the states. In case you're wondering, I've had to Google every time how to spell biennium. But I'm hoping within two years, I'll be able to figure it out for the next one. So that was passed in early July. And of course, the biennium budget is for all of the state spending, not just education. But as it applies to us, I wanted to highlight some of the, um, state funding portions for K-12 education. Specifically pointing out some revenue limits, equalization aid, categorization aid, uh, mental health, early literacy grants. And then I also put in here, um, some of the federal funding freezes that have no longer been frozen. So you'll get the quick spark notes version of that since those are all going to be included.
That's where the wild cheer is supposed to go up.
See, Brandon?
Yes.
Are we going to be looking, are we going to be incorporating the childcare portion of it into ours? Or are they going to stay separate?
I have to look into that because there is funding for it. I don't know if we qualify because we're K-12.
For some of it, I think we will.
Okay.
So just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, for sure. And, and we'll have that for, I can make the report beforehand, but when it comes to October and we have to do our annual meeting, that type of stuff will be included in that as well as what we'll be getting. Because I don't know that, the, the state hasn't told us, haven't gotten anything from, from DPI, not exactly what it'll look like yet.
And I'm also working through so.
All right.
We're, I mean, everything has now basically been unfrozen. Did we suffer any deleterious effects from the twenty-two days?
Just the loss of sleep that we all experienced.
That's something.
Embarrassed.
All right. So as far as our level, uh, revenue limit goes, it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil. That's remaining the same as the previous year. And our low revenue ceiling is eleven thousand per pupil, which is the same for our budgeting, the preliminary budget that was brought to you in June. We accounted for both of those things with no change. So it doesn't change our budget at all for those things. Equalization aid, um, no change for this upcoming fiscal year or the next one. The current appropriation is about five point five billion. That's statewide for everyone to share. That is a zero percent increase or loss. Um, and again, this is something that we had, uh, budgeted for. We're always super conservative when we make the budget and then if it's extra, great. And if it's not, we're already prepared for it. So, uh, we, uh, one thing I wanted to point out is we don't know exactly what it's going to be. These are all estimates at this time. October fifteenth is when the state comes out with the formula that they create that includes, um, some of the, uh, like, exceptions and, uh, impact aid voucher, voucher buybacks and that sort of thing. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into the formulated thing that the state sends us and that we get that on October fifteenth, which is after the third Friday count in September, which tells us exactly how many students are in the district. Moving on to special education aid, this was one of the bigger impacts. Special education aid is going to be reimbursed at forty-two percent, uh, for the upcoming fiscal year and forty-five percent for the following fiscal year. This is a jump from thirty point six is where we were, uh, for the previous fiscal year. So what does that mean for us? An estimated about four hundred thousand in Fund Twenty-seven that we will not need to be transferred from Fund Ten. So, uh, digging down a little bit deeper, last year, we transferred, uh, three million seventy thousand dollars from our Fund Ten accounts to help support our Fund Twenty-seven. Four hundred of that will not have to be transferred over for this year, uh, representing an increase in our Fund Ten spending. Again, these are approximates and they're appropriated based on how every district in the state, how many, it's all shared and so we can't just say all at once. It all has to be shared amongst everybody.
Will that cover the missing parts?
So our special education has been overspent for multiple years now. And so last year, we are going to get four hundred thousand new dollars and we are going to get some flexibility there because we won't transfer as much over to the special education. So he comes to that a little bit later. There's a couple other, um, budget items that have historically run in the negative. One of our open enrollment out, um, continues to rise at an alarming rate. And so we have a hole there.
That could eat a whole bunch of that, okay.
I stole your lead, sorry.
That's all good. High-cost special education, this was new last year. And for the upcoming fiscal year, any high-cost special education is going to be reimbursed at fifty percent. The previous year was twenty-five percent. So for your reference, um, we received, uh, reimbursement of twelve point five thousand for last year's high-cost special education and that was reimbursed at a rate of twenty-five percent. And so we're hoping for a little bit more this year. In order to qualify for this, a single people has to accumulate over thirty thousand dollars worth of, um, educational needs and equitable expenses, I should say.
And they have to be paid for out of a certain product money. So us going in the hole all the time, we have paid for it out of Fund Ten instead of our flow-through and then you can't claim that for high-cost special education. So the business office does an awful lot of transfer of expenses and funds to try to get as much aided as we possibly can. But sometimes when a student suddenly needs to be transported outside of the district and that fund is already, that, that entitlement from the government is already fully depleted, we have to pay for it somewhere else and then it no longer becomes aided here, so.
I'm in emphasis on mental health. Funding for the upcoming biennium, uh, will be fifty million dollars allocated over the state for those two years, but it's separated a little bit differently. It'll be forty thousand in the first year and ten, sorry, forty million in the first year and ten million in the second year. And then the tricky part about it is we don't know necessarily how it's going to come. If it's going to be a state grant, um, or if it's going to be divvied up and allocated to all school districts. We don't know that part. We just know that, um, it's, uh, fifty million over two years dedicated to mental health.
That's nice.
And that is not a change from current reality, correct?
Correct. It is exactly the same as the prior biennium. So it's the same amount, which means that we can, uh, continue offering some of the things that we already do, such as maybe health workers and mental health.
Did it do the forty-ten thing last time too?
I don't believe so.
No, you can carry over. So if you, whatever you get, so if, uh, those that remember, we first had a, um, mental health grant in our district at the tune of like ninety thousand dollars and it was supposed to be a two-year grant and they gave it, they awarded it to us for two years. They gave us the ninety thousand the first year. And then the second year, they said, just kidding, we're taking all the money back and we're dividing it out amongst the whole state on a per pupil basis. And our entitlement, our grant of ninety thousand went down to about forty-five thousand because that's what we got when they evenly dispersed it. We're hoping to maintain the forty-five that we have received. We don't know how they're going to divide that out.
This is for the whole state, not Black or Polk State.
Correct, correct.
And in this, uh, grant, uh, fifty million state over two years is also include mental health for the board members too?
Absolutely. I will send a mini offer to your way.
If it was serious question, I don't know.
All right. So moving on to early literacy, there was a grant that was supposed to come out when Act Twenty, uh, first came out and then it, the money was frozen. We talked about it a little bit earlier, Nicole did. That is going to be released to the states. And so it's reimbursable for things that you bought to support Act Twenty. What it looks like for us, we're going to be reimbursed at eight hundred and fifty-two dollars for the AIMS Web Diagnostic Assessment that we purchased. Next year, we'll be able to apply. Um, next year, we'll be able to apply for reimbursement for any consumables for our C K L A curriculum.
Lots of printer paper.
Um, and then, uh, open enrollments is one of the, uh, the other really big impact that we'll get. Um, the transfer amount for open enrollment will increase by the per-pupil adjustment of three hundred twenty-five dollars for last year, this year, plus an extra five hundred dollars. So that's six fifty plus five hundred approximate, or about eleven hundred dollars per student for open enrollment. That's both in and out, um, unfortunately, our outs, um, for our surplus plan are ins. And so what that looks like in the previous year for, um, general education, uh, this was our per-pupil open enrollment at eight thousand, eight thousand nine hundred, uh, for the upcoming year, it's gonna be ten thousand one hundred, in the following year, eleven thousand. And so what does that look for us, look like for us? Our open enrollment last year amounted to about one point eight million, of which we budgeted one point six. If we apply the same numbers as we had last year at an increased rate of twelve percent, uh, we're looking at, uh, over, over two million. Um, for your reference, previous biennials have increased at an average rate of about four percent each year, and this time it jumped to a, a high of twelve percent.
And so if your rate of open enroll in and out stays exactly the same, um, you are either a significant winner or a significant loser. So because we are already in the negative for open enrollment out, now increasing, so we got another three hundred twenty-five dollars per pupil, and for all of our open enrollment out, we have to send out an additional one thousand one hundred, is that the math?
Uh, yeah, one thousand one hundred per pupil.
Yeah, one thousand one hundred per student, and so, um, that comes with a very, very, that that hits hard. Um, one of the things that has been talked about a lot with legislature is the voucher system. When a student is a public school student and they choose to go to a private school using the voucher system, that dollar payment has been closer to eleven thousand dollars, if it's specialized, it's twelve thousand. So there's a large number of people who believe that them changing the open enrollment rate is trying to marry that. So if you're public going to private, it's eleven thousand, if you're public going to public, it was eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. Um, we think that they're trying to bring those rates to be the same, and that gets closer to this, um, age-old idea of a voucher in every backpack, that, uh, parents would get the amount of money that it takes to educate their child, and they get to shop around for their education, and so, um, for public education, that's a very, uh, frightening idea, because parents make a lot of choices if they have those dollars to spend, um, in whatever way they want, right, virtual or all kinds of different opportunities, so. This is a significant factor for us, I'd like to just start from this, talk a little bit more about the open enrollment out, um, cause when Brandon saw the numbers like this, and he's been a principal in the district and has heard us talking about it, he's like, I know a few years ago, we called all the open enroll-out families to talk to them and say, um, you know, was there an incident that happened that you were displeased with, or you felt you weren't heard or listened to, that you decided to leave, or was it just general dissatisfaction? And I would have to, I will dig up the previous survey, but overwhelmingly, it was people who live right on the fringes of our district and were very large geographically, so they live in down near Warrens, but they work in Toma, and so they take their kids to Toma. We have kids who live ten minutes from almost center high school, but they're within our boundaries, so they can go there for ten minutes, or they can come here for thirty, and then there are, um, certainly others who, there's been an incident that they, um, the trust was broken, and they no longer choose to bring their kids here. Um, and then there are some that, when we start to apply some pressure, either academically or for attendance, and the family says, we're out, we're leaving, and they get to, they get to go. Um, so that open enrollment out, I don't know that, we just did it two years ago, I don't know that we need to call everybody, but we certainly need to call all the people that are new open enroll out to see what we can learn about what we can do different. Um, when, uh, family applies for open enrollment mid-year, I usually call the principal and say, hey, Suzie, you just filled out the open enrollment form, you know what's going on, and sometimes the principal says, I had no idea they were displeased, and the principal will reach out and talk to the family, and sometimes the family's like, no, we're out of here, and sometimes they're like, oh, I'll give that a try, we'll come back. Um, that happens more often at the high school, when a student is struggling with attendance, we're starting to apply pressure, and then they decide they wanna open enroll out to a virtual school, and then they feel like their attendance can hide a little easier in a virtual school. So then we pay that virtual school the eleven thousand dollars for that student to go there, um, and then the virtual school gets to say, they're not engaging, we're kicking them out, they're coming back to you. And so depending on what time of year that happens, our aid has already been sent, or it hasn't been sent, it's just a really, really, really significant challenge for us, um, the one that I would love to do some brainstorming around, so. Whether we get a group of parents to come talk to us about it, or, um, I don't think that the principals are the people they wanna talk to, I don't know if that's a conversation some board members want to have, I just feel like this is looking at over two million dollars of a twenty-four million dollar budget that we are sending to our neighbors to educate the kids who live in our community.
Well, it's gonna be to AI soon, it's gonna be to AI schools in Austin.
You're absolutely right.
But, but is there no clawback if they send the student back here, they take the money to educate the student for the year, okay.
Yeah, depends on when, so there's the third Friday in September count, then there's a third Friday in January count, and so they have to be in one spot for both of those counts in order for the aid to follow, um, but then later in spring and all that.
Uh, Brandon, it says, uh, open enrollment, eleven thousand dollar, eleven thousand, year twenty-twenty-seven, right?
Correct.
And underneath it says fourteen thousand, then I cannot read my eyesight, it's super weird.
Special education, that's the same reimbursement rate if you're special education.
So that is for special, okay, so eleven thousand, if we multiply by sixteen hundred student, it turned out seventeen million six hundred thousand dollars, investment on education of children, right? But you were saying twenty-four million dollar.
Yeah, you've seen the budget a couple of different times now, that we have a broader twenty-four million dollar total budget.
Total budget, right?
Yep.
So this, uh, eighteen million, approximately eighteen million dollar will be investment on the education, nothing else.
No, I would not say that, all of our funds come together into one budget.
So like buses will go out of eighteen thousand, eighteen million dollars additionally.
So you are doing very simple math, trying to come up with the eighteen million, eighteen million is not a real budget number in our district. That is when you take sixteen hundred and you multiply it by the eleven thousand, that's like a ma, that's not real data, right? Our total budget is closer to twenty-four million dollars, because we also get those entitlements that come in, not on a per-pupil basis. We get, um, impact aid, that's not included in there, we get our Title One money from the federal government, that's not on a per-pupil basis. So the total budget is twenty-four million, and we don't break it down by, this money comes in and can only be spent on education, this can only be spent, that's not the way that we do the budget.
So, yeah, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I went to a conference, wasn't my favorite conference, but I went to a conference, I don't know, when I first, like, um, started, and they had a huge emphasis on, um, vouchers and the impact of vouchers on schools as a whole, I mean, just quality. Um, when you start like playing musical chairs with schools, it gets crazy, um, and then kind of the idea of like, let's water someone else's grass and scrub our own yard, like, that's also strange. But I kind of wonder, um, if there's some way we can start kind of having kind of those baseline conversations, or building some kind of awareness about the possibility of the negative outcomes associated with those, um, those open enrollments out, well, and in actually, just open enrollment in general, and the voucher system as a whole, in terms of how it's projected to kind of impact our, our education system and its kind of current, uh, public access state.
The funding form is gonna have to shift, we're gonna can, what it boils down to is the tax for public education, and it used to be for public education, and now those funds are being divided to support private education and public education, and nobody wants to pay anymore, which is absolutely reasonable, but the same pool of dollars can't support two systems, and so both systems are gonna have to change, we're gonna, like, something is gonna have to give for sure, that's a very simplistic view of it, but I certainly can look for some of those materials.
I just like the transparency that goes with how dollars are being allocated into certain spaces that I think the general public might feel um, less inclined to support if they knew. So I'm wondering, um, at some point, if that might be a conversation worth kind of throwing around a little bit as well.
Alright, so the last part of this then is, uh, the federal funding that was frozen, it no longer is, but at the time of this writing, only one of those was released, and that was the, uh, Nita M. Loeh, um, uh, grant, and that's the last one that you, that you recognized. Um, our local impacts, well, between the two of them, was about two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred thirty bit for BLAST and ninety-three for these other three, um, impacted grants. Uh, so one of them was the Americans with Disability Act, we fund, uh, one teacher with salary and benefits with that one, and set to be frozen, it was about fifty-six thousand dollars, now unfrozen. Uh, English language tran, uh, acquisition, this was only about eight hundred dollars. Um, and Title Four A, Student Success and Academic Achievement, this is what we use for, um, camera systems, our transportant, uh, system for all of our busing, and, um, cameras for that, some curriculum and some support staff training. And then the last one was the, uh, the BLAST funding, the Nita M. Loeh Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers. You have any questions on those federal grants?
No.
Um, so things to be determined, like.
Actually, yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
So we're about halfway through that, the grant cycle for that, is there already a plan in place for you to do the, um, renewal?
We will definitely apply when it's available, so they don't even allow you to start when you're in, um, I'm still uncertain whether the grant will continue to exist, um, we are in year three of five, so we do all of our annual reporting, but you don't do an actual renewal until you're in year four, so. And our coordinator, Chrissy Roche, just responded.
We, we got your email, it says it has been released for our BLAST program.
Um, so just a couple of things to keep in mind, um, these are budgeted items, we don't know anything for certain, um, just a kind of our best guess in these summer months, things that'll impact it, third Friday in September counts, enrollments, enrollment exemptions, um, impact aid, um, is something we get for non-taxable land, basically, uh, but if you show a loss in impacted aid, then you get a amount of money for showing a loss in it, there's just so many different variables that play into it, voucher aid reductions. Um, so I showed you the, uh, enrollment, uh, numbers, but not included in there is students that go to voucher programs, and we do have some of those, they're not as tremendous, um, as the open enrollment, but we do have some, we don't get to know who those students are. So at this stage, uh, everything's just a projection, uh, we'll know more after the third Friday in September counts, and then you'll get to hear, uh, forecast at the October board meeting, and then of course, we have the annual meeting the fourth Monday in October.
So, we know that the freeze is unfrozen, um, and the money that's been allocated already is now going to come through. Do we have any crystal ball knowledge of what's on the chopping block for next year yet?
Yeah, it is so hard, cause honestly, when, when the money was being withheld, we heard from Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, they said to all superintendents on the Zoom, they said, we think all the money from the feds is gonna be released, but we think they're gonna cut about fifteen to twenty percent of it, so you're only gonna get, you know, eighty-five, eighty percent of it. And then they said, and then we think it's gonna go through Joint Finance Committee, so your states are gonna get to jumble it all together, get and figure out how they're gonna allocate it, so we were, I was doomsday for sure, Brandon, like, we're not getting that much money. We're gonna, and we were already thinking about BLAST, so it's kind of a hundred thirty, if we got a hundred, how many families could be served, how could we get leaner, all of those things, we're already having those conversations. And then it was like, somebody said, just kidding, here it all is, so it's just incredibly unpredictable. Um, all of the conversation around after-school programming I have heard is that, um, there's not a lot of support for it federally, and those are federal dollars that are funded, funneled through the state, so you do your application to your state agency, but it is definitely federal dollars, so to be honest, I think that's probably our most vulnerable, and as you saw in there, it's definitely our largest pool of dollars.
If Department of Education folds, what happens?
I don't know where all that money is going to come through, like, I heard a wild hair that, um, uh, Title One was gonna go to, uh, human services. Okay, I don't know what that looks like, is it still gonna be based on free and reduced populations in your communities, or if we're blowing it up, are we starting, that, I, I just, I feel like things are so incredibly unpredictable, and I can't follow the soundbites with any, I can't draw any connections through the soundbite, so I, I don't know.
One more, do you know if, now that the, the money, um, has gone through for free and reduced, have the qualifications for free and reduced changed with the triple B bill?
With the SNAP benefits.
Um, are, are we gonna have people, cause, oh, and, and, and then even if they haven't changed, is the paperwork going on? Cause one of the things that supposedly happened with, with Medicaid reimbursements is they're calculating savings without having changed the, the, the qualification requirements, because they've increased the paperwork load. And so they're just calculating that they're gonna take a ten percent less successful applications, basically. Do we know if we're gonna see, even if they haven't changed, have the requirements to qualify for SNAP gotten more owners? Just that, do you have to submit it twice a year instead of once a year, like, what all has changed, and will the student population be informed what new hoops they need to jump through?
And so the.
To get that, cause I saw your video online, and you say like, you know, we're gonna go, you know, we're gonna do what we can, even if you, you know, we'll see, we'll see, find some way to get your lunch if we can, you know, talk to us. Can we get information out to people, like?
Yeah.
You'll still qualify, but you need to file this form twice, or anything like that, can we?
Sure, so.
Do some heavy lifting there?
So SNAP benefits, they don't apply through us, we have that direct certification, so they actually apply to whatever community agency they are working with to qualify for those benefits, and then our system pulls those benefits out. And so what our secretaries do, and, um, Joey from this office, they're fantastic at a family that they really, the secretaries just know each individual family much better, and so that they, um, sometimes make some educated guesses, and they will reach out to a family in kindness and say, hey, I noticed that you've reverted to full-paid meals, um, have you filled out the form, so there will be some of that gentle prodding, we will certainly, um, announce those timelines as we can, um, but they don't actually fill out those applications to us, we, they fill them out to the other agencies, and then the systems sync, and they're marked as that in our system, so, yeah.
And then, the, the final question is, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
That takes employee hours, how much money did we actually save by getting rid of free lunch for everybody if we then have to have staff members?
Funny you should ask about staffing in that.
Seems like a logical question, I'm not sure that's where that's.
So we have an absolutely amazing, uh, individual downstairs who, any task you give Joey Gilbertson, she is on it. Um, she used to be the person who chased down all those forms initially, like handed through all them into the computer, then when the direct certification system came, she was faster at it, what takes a ton of her time is going back at the end of the week, uh, this elementary kid ate five days, she has to go into that family account and recode those five meals to the Angel Fund, that's extremely tedious, extremely tedious, and when she does that, she sends notification to the family, your child's meals were paid for this week through the Angel Funds, we'd appreciate you depositing money into your child's account. If you need to apply for free and reduced, please reach out, you know, so that message goes out, so that is extremely tedious. When we went to free meals for all, we actually had Joey start spending some of her day at the bus garage, uh, she's part of the dispatch at the transportation office. And we've had some conversations about now that she's getting back the food service, whether she can continue to sport at the bus garage, or if we're gonna need to add some staffing over there, so, um, that is live action conversations happening.
Okay. That's all my budget questions.
They were good, myself.
Alright, so there's no approval on that one, however, we have some, uh, budget revisions noticed, this was in your packets. Um, in June, Jill presented to you the, the updated budget for the school year, and then this one is some changes that we've had to make. Um, so this one is the official one, the second page is the detailed version of it. Um, why is it different, where did the money go, is in this. Do we have any questions about those budget revisions?
Would you highlight the open enrollment, I just want people to see that number. Non-program transaction function, so that amount right there, that four million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand and seventy-eight dollars, that is all open enrollment to other districts and our, um, transfer from Fund Ten into Fund Twenty-seven for special education, so, uh, both of those were dramatically impacted by the biennium budget this year.
And that's about a fifty-fifty split between the two of those, they're each about two point five?
Uh, no, well, close.
Close to, so the, um, budget transfer from Fund Ten to Twenty-seven was about three million.
Okay.
Little over three million seventy-six.
So about two of it's going out to open enrollment, okay.
This does need your approval, cause we're, um, that budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Name?
Nobody named.
Motion, yes. Okay. 10.1, meeting minutes from the June. All move to approve the June meeting minutes.
A second.
All in favor seeing if I'm gonna say a no?
Aye.
Or should paces? Now we're back to 10.2.
Again, okay. I actually don't have anything for you on my agenda to roll the agenda, I'm good.
WSB or others?
Season four meeting in, in August, they don't have a July meeting. Randy and I from Elmo Center were elected for representation for area. And it's actually gonna be a Castle Hill, which is like super exciting, so I don't have to drive to Lake. And there, so I was like, yeah, cool. So anybody who is interested, there's that happening.
Did you get primary?
I, you know, I've never been there.
I remember the Castle Hill, Neil was like, um.
You gotta support your local summer club.
I, I'm so excited to go, you don't even know.
Nice to talk to Perry. All right, um, conference workshop attendance, I think that was it, also. Schoolwork collection opportunities, I can think of two. On the 12th of August is the new teacher breakfast at the district office.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All board members that are able to attend are encouraged.
Could we get an email about that?
Sure can. The calendar invite for that? Can you do a calendar invite for that?
That would be awesome for all things.
And then on the 18th is the all-staff gathering at the London Theater at AM, which is the first day for all staff to come back to school.
I was with two I was gonna need.
Somebody asked me about talking about it. And I will unless somebody else has their hearts set on it.
It's usually a five to eight, 10-minute welcome.
Or you can come there too, I believe.
Absolutely, there's many times that other board members will come just to listen and stand and smile and wave and.
I think that is breakfast again too, you know, if you're into breakfast and stuff like that.
Can I just ask, not to belabor things, but the new staff member breakfast, it used to be that we used to invite new staff members to one of the board meetings. And we would ask them to come at like 5:30 and the board members would agree to come at 5:30. It was just a little social, introduce yourselves. And then a different group of elected officials said that felt clunky and they didn't like asking the new teachers to come on an evening if they didn't necessarily need to be there. And so we transitioned to the morning. I know that last year, there weren't a lot of people that were available. And I absolutely respect everyone's got life and work and all that.
Is that when new staff starts then?
Uh, yes, yep. And they spend most of that day here with all the district office staff going through paperwork. And I go through the handbook with them and.
Fun stuff.
The god and no stuff, but.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday. And so I guess I would just plant the seed, like right now that's in there for this year. If you really hate it, we can talk about something different. But if there's another time of day or another event other than breakfast that would work better for you, we're wide open for that input. Because the whole purpose is that you can put faces with names and that they see the board as a partner in the work that we do. That day, will their mentor be there? Yes, so that means that there will also be mentor teachers here.
So give it some thought and if something else works better, please let us know, because we're wide open. Thanks.
Future agenda items, I'm not sure if you have one behind?
I got one. I've had a lot of questions coming in about the first day of school and what the real first day of school is.
Okay.
People concerned about, you know, like I do a, you know, like we take a picture. Do I wear my first day of school clothes on this day or that day? Or, or even like, are they just gonna put them in front of a TV for three days? Like what's gonna happen with those first three days? Are they real school days, is there gonna be a curriculum? And so something needs to go out.
So I absolutely will put something out, but I also want you armed with information, okay? So I'm gonna tell you right now the answer and then we will put some other communication out. So they are called summer school transition days, jumpstart days into the school year. They count as summer school. Attendance will be taken because we want to know if, well, for summer school, we have to report how many kids are here. So we are going to take attendance. Last year, there was people who felt like we were being shady by calling families if their child didn't attend. And I explained at the time, I would explain again. There was a tragedy in our region of a family who thought their child went to their jumpstart day. They went home later that day to find out their child had taken their life during the day. And so when parents send their kid to school, they trust that we are gonna call and let them know whether their kid is there or not. So we will follow those procedures. But there's nothing going into Skyward. If a child comes all three days, they don't get any shiny stars. If they don't come, there's not three days marked absent. But we will take attendance, we will follow up for people who are not there. It is transition days, so there's a lot of review from last year. I, I walked through a couple of buildings last year, I didn't see any TVs rolled out. There was a lot of active things happening. There was, like at the high school, they do a freshman orientation and they do some cross-grade level things. And then they do walk around and get through some of the syllabus stuff, and here's what we're gonna do. And there's no, what the rule is, is there's no work that can be held over them if they don't come. So that means if a parent just is diabolically opposed to their child coming to school three more days, when those kids do come to school, the teacher will have to make sure that they get all the things that they need in order to be successful moving forward. But it doesn't mean the teacher's gonna repeat every word that just happened. There's gonna be experiences and hands-on things happening during those three days.
Okay, and then just, why?
Many reasons. One, the school calendar is aggressive, it's restrictive. If you cannot start until after September 1st. And every time we put a calendar out, people vote for the earliest time out, right? And everyone wants a week's spring break, and they want longer at Christmas, and they want, and they want, and they want, and they want, right? We no longer count student days for this date, we count hours of instruction. Because of the number of hours each of our school days are, we have more than the bare minimum. There are some districts that every single time they call us no day, they need to make up those hours of instruction because they are just down to the minimum. We don't do that. I think that is the basement, not where we should shoot for. Our teachers are contracted for 189 days. Eight of them are professional development days, two are parent-teacher conference days, like all of those. And then there's a set number that are student contact days. And we have give room in there. So what it boils down to is we get additional funding for having more participation in summer school. So last year, we did those three jumpstart days and we gained enough money to hire another 4K teacher. It is 100% for that purpose and it gives us a little flexibility during the school day. So we don't count it as minutes of instruction for the students, because we can't until after September 1st. So it's not minutes of instruction, but it is contract days for staff. So staff get to start their 189 staff days. Students aren't starting their days of instruction yet. If they are there, it's a bonus for them, for the experiences and, and the learning. And it's a bonus for us because we get the reimbursement through summer school. Summer school is not a student-to-student reimbursement. It is, it takes like.
About 40%.
It, we only, but it's like 2,000, 248,000 minutes to be one FTE. And we get 40% of the funding for a student for one FTE. So there's a lot of districts in our region for sure that have started doing this so that they can open up their calendar during the year a little bit. Because it's counting as those contract days, we can, last, next year, our school year ends on May 29th. So that, that was very desirable by everyone who voted.
And then just, just to clarify, when there's no instruction can take place, that doesn't mean no.
Instruction can definitely take place. 100% instruction can place, can take place. It can't be new material, like you couldn't do work on day two and assign an assignment. And then when September 1st rolls around, you didn't do that assignment, you get a low grade right away because this happened then. So instruction can, it's like summer school. You can go and do experiential things, you can do hands-on things. I know they do a ton of classroom routines. Because if you're teaching 18 first graders and if 16 of them are there and have three days of classroom routines under their belt already, when those other two kids come on that September 1st, they get to join a community that's already bonded a little bit as opposed to everybody coming in without it. So it helps us get to the instruction faster once September 1st starts. And there definitely was some confusion last year, there was a lot of people who were just angry. I literally could look at a map and point to 10 districts around us that have been doing this for years. There was some bizarre conspiracy theory that I don't understand. But we have corrected our language that is talked about as the summer school jumpstart days. And DPI has communicated with us, they are fine with everything that we've put out. So we 100% will on the electronic sign. It said first day of school, September 28th. And I drive by that every day to inform school. I call the office, the lady who does the sign, she does a fantastic job. I said, can't say that, you have to say summer school jumpstart days and first official day. So we will put something out to correct that. It is financial, it is, gives us calendar flexibility. And honestly, there are so many parents who are ready for their kids to come back to school. By mid-August, any teacher walking around Walmart, the parents are like, can you take them now? Or so, honestly, summer break is long and the fact that we can't start till September 2nd really, especially when all of our sport, next week, we hand out football equipment. And yet there's another month until we're supposed to be able to start school. So it's a way to work in a little flexibility around the rigidity of can't start till after September 1st. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, but I, I was a little confused by it. And then I started like.
Yeah.
When you go school shopping, you play at Target and just people come up to you and they're like, what's with this? You're like, oh, okay, this is a.
For sure, for sure. We talked about it before, we'll talk about it again.
Yep.
So if it's okay, I won't put it on the board agenda, because you guys all are now armed with the information. But I will make sure that communication goes out to families about it. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I preferred, but I didn't know if I was allowed to bring it up if it was.
For sure, I, well, I want you armed with the information as well. So when someone asks you, you can answer. You don't have to talk to them for 20 minutes like I just did, but you can tell them some things.
Any other future agenda items? So you know?
Make a question.
I've filed, you, you did it? I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Journey? All right.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
No, it looked like, I didn't see any, I didn't see any, um.